We call the meeting to order. The bewitching hour is upon us. Will the clerk call the roll, please?
Mayor Johnston.
Here.
Mayor Protem Wyrick.
Here.
Councilmember Blatts.
Here.
Councilmember Francina.
Here.
Councilmember Haney.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum. Pledge of allegiance. Do you like your gentleman lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item is the approval of the agenda, but before we get into that, I would like to review the protocols for the meeting, both for the benefit of the audience and for to clarify anything here at the dais. And that is regarding how I'm supposed to do it, how I try to do it, and if occasionally I don't do it, call a point of order and we'll clear it up. But as items come up in a business meeting, the council is regulated by the Robert's Rules of Order, as modified by the city's protocol. When we have the public making comment, the standard time everybody's aware of is three minutes. In those cases where we have a lot of cards and a lot of items on the agenda, we divide the number who'd like to speak into the amount of time we think we have, and we kind of pair that back a little. As a courtesy to the audience, the council tries not to talk on subjects any longer than we allow the citizens to talk on them during the discussion, but the council has the liberty when they take it under deliberation to speak longer if they should choose. Now, when an item comes up, as chair, I identify the item and usually go to staff, or should go to staff, for the staff report to put the matter on the table. Then we go from there to public, or pardon me, we go there to the council to see if there are any questions of staff, just as information only, and then we open it up to public comment. And those items that are on the agenda, the public is entitled to comment on. After the public has finished commenting, we bring it back to the table, and then I ask for a motion so we know what the proposal is. And then, once the motion is made and seconded, we then take it under deliberation amongst the council people. Now, sometimes we get that a little out of order, but that is the process by which we try to focus on the subject, giving the public the right for input in a timely way, and then knowing when we bring it back for discussion, knowing what it is we're talking about, a motion is made. After that, we either continue the matter or we take action on it. So, anyway, with that, just as a clarification, I also want to point out two things as we start the meeting. We are amazingly, the city manager and I were looking at the calendar on council meetings between now and Christmas, and after tonight, we only have eight more. So, the business that we need to get taken care of, we need to sort of move along, and as I look at the agenda tonight, it appears that we could pull an all-nighter if we wanted to, based on some of the topics. So, let's review the agenda and approve it before we get started. So, do we have any suggested changes in the agenda?
I'll move that the agenda stay as written.
I'll second.
Okay. I would suggest that, at least based on the amount of email I've received, and I don't know that I recognize in the audience any particular side, but almost all the information on item number eight had comments on it, and I'd like to pull that forward and take care of that early before we get into the more lengthy debate. So, if I don't hear any objection to that...
We have a motion to approve as listed, as published.
I'll second.
And as mayor, I guess I could have changed it all on my own, but I would move that we move item number eight up to item number two.
Point of order, we should have a vote on the motion.
No.
I understand the mayor's motion to be a substitute motion. If it gets a second, it will be voted upon first.
That is correct.
I'm happy to second that.
Okay.
All right, then that would be voted upon first.
Okay, so, it doesn't sound like anybody wants to discuss it, but item number eight was a suggested item for the agenda, and I was thinking that if we got it out of the way quickly, we would then spend the time on two fairly complicated and controversial issues, which are second unit and the leaf blower. So, is there any discussion on that besides mine? If not, will the clerk call the roll?
Councilmember Blatts?
No.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
No.
Mayor Protem Wyrick?
No.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes. Okay, the motion fails, and the agenda will be accepted as submitted.
Consensus vote on the original motion to approve as written is what that amounts to, unless there's any objections.
Right.
Could I make a motion to somehow move it forward so that it's not... And the reason is this, that we received...
Well, we have a motion on the table, right?
There is a motion on the table still. Perhaps the councilwoman is getting to a proposed alternate substitute motion.
The chair would like to assert his authority to deal with that. I'll call on the parliamentarian if we need it. Right now, we have a request as to whether or not anyone would accept a different amendment to the agenda order. Is that correct?
Okay, well, we could, this is what I would like to see. If around, if it appears that we cannot get to item number eight, that we move it forward so that it doesn't hang over our head for the next two weeks, because it has generated a lot of public interest. So, can we decide that, we can decide that later, or do we need to decide that now?
Counselperson, you can make a motion to move it forward. I was moving it forward to the beginning and get it taken care of. That was defeated. If you want to try something different, that's fine, otherwise, the thing will stand.
Okay, I'd like to move it forward to, well, I'd like to know if there's any, except, you know, to move it forward so that we get, so that we are assured that we can handle it tonight.
Okay. The only way to do that is to make a motion to move it to an earlier item on the agenda. Right now, we have, number two is a public hearing that potentially could last a while. Number three is a subject that potentially could last a while, and then there are several other items on here.
Well, the rest are more routine items, so I suggest we make number eight number four, so that, to assure that we don't have to carry this to the next city council meeting.
Is there a second to that? Okay, I'll second it. I think we can count the votes, but...
I mean, to be honest, we've had many requests that we strike this from the agenda completely.
Okay, but we don't, let's not debate it right now. The question is the order of the agenda. The clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Haney?
No.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatts?
No.
Mayor Protem Wyrick?
No.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes. Motion fails. Now, if there's no further suggestion or debate, if there's no objection, we'll accept the agenda now as it was submitted originally. Okay, we have, what, public comment first?
Consent.
Okay, let's see what we have in the way of cards. Okay, is Risa Horowitz? Okay, Risa's coming forward. Chelsea, is there Chelsea? You want to come on up? There's a little chair up here close at hand.
Thank you.
Risa, please.
Honorable mayor and members of the city council, city manager, city attorney, Chief Freihoff, my name is Risa Horowitz, and I am a medical cannabis advocate and educator. I want to take this time this morning, this evening, to thank the members of the city council and the mayor for their decision to finally come up with something for medical cannabis patients in the city of Ojai, the Ojai Valley, and residents of the county. I especially want to thank a few individuals. I want to thank the city manager, because I know that it has been a really bumpy road, and I understand you really didn't have much to go by, and I think I understand, as do many other people, that this wasn't an easy process. Secondly, I'd like to thank councilperson Souza Francina personally, because she's gone out of her way for a number of years in support of medical cannabis patients. She helped facilitate a meeting with Representative Das Williams when I was in Sacramento lobbying the state representatives. I also want to thank my colleague Sarah Armstrong, who is the Director of Industry for Americans for Safe Access, because without her guidance, I don't know this process could have come together as it has. And finally, I'd like to thank councilperson Bill Wyrick, Mayor Protem Bill Wyrick, because of his tireless persistence in this matter, we've been able to see this through three dispensaries that will be operating hopefully before long in Ojai, and I think this is a great asset to the community. I think at least that, you know, I know of two of these businesses that did receive permits, and I personally think that although the process was hard, and we have an ordinance in place right now, I also believe that we want to make this ordinance even better. We want to have safe access for people. We don't want to have people abusing medical cannabis. We want patients who truly need this medicine to live and thrive and have a better life existence. So, I really want to thank all of you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Risa. Chelsea, and Steve, you're on deck.
Thank you. Chelsea Situla, I'm the executive director of Sarsby Creek Collective, and I'm humbled and grateful for the opportunity to operate a dispensary and a delivery service under the permits that were granted last week. I want to thank you, I want to thank Mayor Protem Wyrick, I want to thank city manager McClary, Captain Freihoff, we're going to be working closely together, and all the staff that have been working, I know, hard on this issue. I know you guys, like you said, are figuring it out as you go. I appreciate that, and we're all going to, we're all going to figure it out, but more importantly, I think we're all just really relieved, I'm elated, but more importantly, the patients are elated, to have an end in sight to this prohibition. We're all really determined to make you proud, really proud, and to have no regrets that you've taken these steps forward. So, I just wanted to let you know that I'm very grateful, and I look forward to setting a really good example and working with all of you and answering any questions anytime. Thank you.
Thank you, Chelsea. Okay, Steve, you're up with Kimberly Rivers on deck.
Thank you, Mayor Johnston, the council members and staff. Steve Quilicee, I live in the city. I just wanted to say how sad I am to hear that Ojai is losing an excellent journalistic voice with the retirement of Bill Warner from the Ojai Valley News. The man writes well, he writes succinctly and plainly, and I'm going to miss seeing his stories in the Ojai Valley News, and I just wanted to be sure that the folks at home know that we're losing this, this man who does, has done such a good job for us all in spreading the word. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Very true.
Okay, Kimberly, with Dennis Leary on deck.
Hello, Mayor Johnston, Mayor Protem Wyrick, councilmembers. I'm Kimberly Rivers, executive director of SeaFrog, Citizens for Responsible Oil and Gas, and I am also a resident of the city of Ojai. I'm here tonight for SeaFrog to ask that we be added to a future agenda item so that we can present our request for a $25,000 grant to fund legal action aimed at protecting and strengthening the Ojai Valley area plan. I think you're all aware that Ventura County's currently updating their countywide general plan, and the Ojai Valley area plan is part of that. Through SeaFrog's work on oil and gas projects in the valley, we've become aware of the county's practice of completely circumventing the five-pound-per-day air emissions threshold that's part of the Ojai Valley area plan. This puts our air shed in jeopardy. That rule was put in place to clean and to keep clean our air shed. The entire valley is actually in severe non-attainment for air quality emission standards, and the gorgeous mountains that surround us actually trap air pollution. This means we have to be vigilant when it comes to reducing actual air emissions throughout the valley in order to keep it the incredible place that we love. SeaFrog's goal is to prevent the Ojai Valley area plan from being weakened in any way during the general plan update process and to strengthen it to put public health and the environment first. In that vein, we have retained the expert environmental law firm of Schut, Mahali, and Weinberger to take action as needed during the general plan update process that's going on now through 2020. With their counsel, we'll ensure clear, concise, and enforceable language is adopted in the final document that will be approved ultimately by the Board of Supervisors. So, please add us to the agenda so that we can show you how important this work is and how the grant money will contribute to protecting Ojai now and for decades to come.
Okay, thank you, Kimberly.
Comment?
Yes.
One is, the five-pound rule is important for far more than just air quality. It's also important for maintaining, holding the line against sprawl, the forces of putting sprawl development in our valley. It's an incredibly important aspect. There is a, the general plan update is at the MAC meeting down in Oak View, by the way, Monday. Do you know the time?
The county just put it up today.
I think it's six, it's seven. So, seven o'clock is a MAC meeting in Oak View at the community center, where all the interested parties should show up and express themselves on this issue, and I can assure you that I will be looking at a future agenda item when we get to that tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Kimberly. Okay, Dennis, you're up. Molly Jordan is on deck.
I asked the mayor to have last meeting's minutes corrected. I am not against tourism, as they said. I am a tourist and a visitor myself. I said Ojai has a double mission to locals and to tourists. I think the STRs could have served Ojai better if regulated rather than banned, if I understand the matter. When I was in Ireland, I loved staying in a STR with a local family rather than a motel. I may be here in Ojai less if the state keeps messing with our trolley, not even Golden State raised its prices 200 percent. Last Tuesday, July 4th, I had a couple of glasses of water at the inn, Ojai Inn and Spa. There was no room at the inn. Business is booming. A couple of bigwigs drove me back to the lower parking lot in their golf cart. I said that Ojai appreciated them, and they said the same about Ojai. I have nothing against wealth, but it's not my cup of tea, like I'm talking about the Ojai Valley Inn and Spa. I like to go there, but I wouldn't want to stay there. Speaking of water, Ojai should have its own well for non-chemicalized drinking water just to be safe. These are all my opinions. Ojai should have solar panels on them there south facing hills. Money is good now. We should invest in infrastructure. If the big state, no, I mean the really big state, messes up, Ojai's money may dry up quicker than a water, water in a tenured drought. If we take too much of a haircut, who's going to pay the police? For next meeting's minutes, please don't say I'm against Cacitas, the police, or the power companies. I love them. They make it possible for me to stay to shop in Ojai. As for traffic, sometimes it's annoying, but it's a small price to pay for those who pay us. Ojai is too important to keep to ourselves. We have an excellent OVN and OQ, but without an Ojai voice, view, or bubble, we're too much in a bubble and may get into trouble. Souza may have her own view on the, on the other view, but that's not my point. Okay, so, what do I want to see?
The gold light is on.
Huh?
The gold light is on.
The gold light? Well, I mean, it's still, it's still, it's not a stop yet.
Yeah.
So, it's 13, so I want to, I enjoy being with you so much that I'm going to take every second count, every, every second is enjoyable. So, now, we got four, three, two, one, stop!
Okay, Molly?
Well, first, I want to thank you for letting me speak, and I'm here actually to invite all of you and all of you to an event, but before I do that, I just want to say something personal about myself. I'm new to Ojai. My husband and I moved here a couple of years ago, and even in these last couple of years, I've had some really scary animal experiences, and I want to tell you a little bit about them. One is, I was walking my horses after the rain, and that evening, a neighbor said to me, "Don't walk your horses for a while, because we've just sprayed here." And then I saw in the daylight a dead rat in my driveway and realized because of the symptoms of it that it had been poisoned. I recognized the symptoms, and I knew that if my dogs or the neighbor's cat or an owl or something found them, they would also die of the secondary poison. So, this got me all riled up, and I went to our homeowners' association and presented something to them, including your resolution against pesticides to discontinue the use of them, which I'm really grateful for, and our homeowners' association decided to discontinue the use of them also, and now we're into something about how the homeowners can do that individually. But that also led me to reading about this wonderful documentary, which is called The Cat That Changed America, and in it, the director said that first you, in the first half of the film, you fall in love with this cat, sorry, and in the second half of the film, you're called to action. And that's what happened to me when I saw this film, and I wanted the city of Ojai to see it, or the whole population of Ojai to see it. So, Souza, the Green Coalition, myself, and Patty Pageling have joined forces to put on this event, which is July 29th, and it's at the Ojai Auditorium. We have cards that... Matilaha. Matilaha, sorry, that we can pass out. But it's basically the story of the mountain lion who crossed the 101 freeway and managed to get himself alive, rare, into Griffith Park. And because he lives in an urban environment like that with such close proximity to us, it tells the story of all the trials and tribulations, including the fact that he too was poisoned, and, but because he's collared and camouflaged, he was able to be treated. So, there's a great story about him, people fall in love with him. It's a great opportunity to educate people, because it's an interesting, entertaining evening, and we're going to have a panel discussion that is going to be moderated by Ed Bagley, and we have experts in the film, like the director of, the California director of the National Wildlife Federation, along with a couple of other people and a local Ojai expert, a doctor who treats people for pesticide poisoning here. So, it's a wonderful opportunity. I want to invite you all and all your constituents, because it's a great opportunity to talk about this and to hear the discussion and to educate people so we can grow Ojai into a safer, healthier place. I'm happy to be here, and thanks again for the opportunity.
Thank you, Molly. Okay, I think all the cards were accurately filed. Is there anybody else out there that was under public comment and turned a card in that maybe I... Okay, well...
Should I just start?
Is this a public comment?
Yes. Hi, my name is Janet Call, and I've lived in Ojai for 36 years. There've been many changes over the years, many for the better, but I must say, this council has been a major disappointment. Over the past two years or so, your constituents, the folks who live here, many within walking distance of this hall, have come forward over and over again regarding their quality of life here in the valley. The ordinance against short-term rentals was a long time coming, and there are still questions regarding enforcement. The leaf blowers, another drawn-out issue. I understood after many opportunities for the public to speak, council directed staff to prepare an ordinance banning all leaf blowers. Tonight, it looks like things have changed, and the council is looking at permitting gas-powered blowers in all zones, including residential. Where did this come from? And the OTID, when the hoteliers opted to discontinue the tax purportedly due to the opposition to council oversight, both councilman Wyrick and councilman Blatts, in my opinion, took the opportunity to belittle the audience. Is it the money? And to throw one more thing, our city manager at the last meeting indicated he was against using city funds to support the Ojai trolley, the only public transportation system in town, yet another example of being tone-deaf to the needs of your community. To quote Councilman Haney from an interview in 2014, quote, "Ojai is more than just a beautiful place to live. It is a way of life. Most of us moved here because we love the small-town atmosphere where people know each other and share a common pride in our local resources," unquote. This is where we, your constituents, are coming from. It seems to me this council has lost its way. I'm not sure what the council is looking for, but it is not consensus. Each time an issue arises, this council seems determined to ignore or undermine the public views. In closing, as I've said before, please proceed with caution regarding decisions that you make for us. Take a look at our town differently, not as a resource, but as a sacred place to be protected and celebrated for its uniqueness.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that brings us to our consent calendar.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes.
I'd like to pull item E for discussion.
Okay. Are there any other items that the council wishes to take off the consent agenda? If not...
I move to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve, a second, but there's no objection. All but item E are approved, and now we'll talk about item E. Councilman Wyrick?
Mayor Johnston, members of the council, the reason I want to, I pulled item E for discussion, is I have some questions, and I understand there's a timeliness issue, but I have some concerns. And one of them is to have a department head on a build-hour basis, you know, in charge of a very sensitive department, a very important department of our city, a key department of our city, on a build-time basis only, rather than a retainer or some hybrid basis, I think is not good practice. You're basically putting somebody in a, in a position in charge of a department on a build-hour basis where it almost becomes difficult for what would normally be the case, that's the whole point of salaries, you know, where you have responsibility for get the job done and for a certain amount of pay. And so, what I'm suggesting is that, besides some issues that I have some other detailed problems with, I have a basic problem with the idea of a department head being on a build-hour basis only. I also have a problem with some of the other aspects of the agreement, and I'm wondering if we are able to, rather than getting into a full debate about it tonight, see if any of my other colleagues have concerns, and if they do, that perhaps we discontinue this item until we can, we can further vet some of those concerns. That's just, it's really up to the rest of you, whether I'm not, I'm the only, if I'm the only one, I'm the only one.
Okay. Well, so far, you're the only one that has spoken, but Mr. City Manager, oh, did you have something?
No, I would, I would like to have some, Steve, maybe fill us in on...
Would you like to add something to, by way of background on this?
Well, Mr. Winiger was, he's currently serving as the interim community development director. This contract would approve his services for the city for a number of months. Mr. Winiger was specifically chosen because he has about 40 years of planning and community development experience. He's also very familiar with Ojai, having worked here as a contract planner for a time, extended time prior to this assignment. So, he's very familiar with the community, the town, its priorities, and as I stated, he knows the code, the history, the personnel, and the ongoing issues. He's also been very valuable in terms of trying to identify some of the process improvements that we're trying to implement at the department. I understand the request, and again, because of the timeliness and the need to have somebody in that position as soon as possible in order... as soon as possible in order to continue the city operations, that's why I am proposing the contract with Mr. Winiger. And again, I would need some approval from the council in order to be able to continue using his services.
Now, is Mr. Winiger is currently under this contract? And is it, what, it's exceeding the, your authority as a dollar amount?
That's correct. That is correct. Right.
He's not under an existing contract?
He's under an existing contract under the city manager's authority, which was done as a stopgap basis so that we could continue to have staffing.
This is just an extension of?
This would go right, because the city manager's authority is limited at twenty-five thousand.
This is an extension of that, but?
That's correct.
This is based upon the hours that you authorize for this person to fill in until such time as a permanent department head is selected?
That is correct, Mr. Mayor.
Right, okay. So that's not unlike what was done in the clerk's office, is that correct?
That is, that is correct, although, to be, to be fair to the Mayor Protem, that was not a department head position. The clerk.
So I just wanted to clarify that. So Steve, the sixty thousand dollars that you're requesting?
Yes, sir.
Is continual authorization to spend up to sixty thousand dollars, sixty thousand dollars on this position? Is that what I'm, is that what I'm reading?
It would be on top of the twenty-five thousand that would have been or would be expended under the city manager's authority.
Right. Go ahead.
And, and then the second thing is, so when we're paying him on an hourly basis, he's a part-time employee right now, right? He's four hours a day?
He's a contractor, so.
So you only have him right now working four hours a day, is that?
Right, it's about sixteen to twenty hours per week, right.
Okay. And, and then the next question is, is he gonna be part of the source of finding and locating a new department head?
That would not be specific to the assignment. We might lean on him for some input in terms of, you know, recruitment or things like that, but that would not be a specific duty. That would be something that would be handled primarily by the city manager's office.
I guess my concern with this is the fact that we, obviously, we don't have a CDD Director. We don't have a full-time planner. And it just seems like we're dragging our heels on trying to fill these positions. And this is a real important position for the city. So I'd just like some understanding, I'd like a shorter timeframe, maybe a date certain, as to when we're gonna get a RFP out for that position. And?
Okay.
And how fast can we get this filled?
Sure.
I don't feel like we're gonna be just, you're gonna come back in three months and say, "I need another sixty thousand, and another sixty thousand, and another."
That I understand, and certainly was not my intent. And I believe we can fully get this done within this contract, have the new person on board by then, and even allow a little bit of overlap transition time so that they can pass on the issues to them. So, no, I'm not intending to, to stretch this out. We will, we are planning to begin the recruitment soon. Part of the issue is, we wanted to work on some of our internal issues before we launched that, to be quite frank. And so that's where we're at.
Okay, could you provide the council at the next meeting, the calendar of what the recruitment schedule is?
Yes, sir.
And actually, this position's only been vacant a short while, is that not?
That's correct.
Okay, so that's, I guess, I don't feel like you're, you're dragging it, but I agree with Councilman Haney that we need to know what the calendar's gonna be.
Agreed.
Just to be sure it doesn't drag out.
Yes, no, it is important that we move on quickly.
Any objection?
I'd like a vote.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just comment. I think that Councilman Haney and Mayor Protem Wyrick's comments are, are valid. However, this is clearly within the realm of the responsibility of the city manager. He needs our approval because of the amount of the contract. The contract looks fine. I think that if we try to micromanage when, I agree, we need to know when these employment positions are gonna be full. But to sit tonight and micromanage what he's doing, I think is inappropriate. I think we look at it, and it appears to be fine. And if it, in the future, looks like we're dragging our feet or whatever, we can address that down.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the contract?
I move to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, a motion to approve and a second. Any further discussion? If not, without, well, let's take the vote.
Yeah, I'd like one.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wyrick?
No.
Councilmember Blatz?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Okay, a motion passes, and I think that concludes the consent calendar. That brings us to the public hearing regarding the Ojai Municipal Code on Second Residential Units. So I will open the hearing. And, Mr. City Manager, would you like to give us a brief summary as to where we are?
Think I will. Actually, I'm gonna turn over to the city attorney, who will run us through an even briefer summary than I would be able to give. Mr. Summers.
Mayor, council, manager. Before you is the culmination of the long, relatively long-running accessory dwelling unit ordinance update process. What's before you is the ordinance is unanimously recommended by the Planning Commission. Note that there were two in pieces of the ordinance that the Planning Commission was not unanimous on, as described in detail. This ordinance is intended to accomplish a couple of things. One, to ensure compliance with the legislature's rewrite of the relevant government code sections requiring the city to have a second unit ordinance. Two, to update the ordinance to reflect some of the broader changes made by the legislature, including the name change from second unit to accessory dwelling unit. Three, to meet the mandate of the housing element, which states that the city will affirmably further housing that is presumed affordable, i.e., and including second units, now accessory dwelling units. And thus, it goes beyond, in a few places, the state mandates, as recommended by the Planning Commission, to exceed the mandates, the minimum mandates of state law. Going, brief overview, but not in detail. And there's a red line in the packet of the current ordinance over the prior ordinance. The purpose is expressly stated for clarity. The definitions are expanded and added. In part, of note there is that the minimum state mandate is that an accessory dwelling unit be defined as a unit in addition to the primary unit that has independent exterior access. The Planning Commission's proposal expands that to also include units that have independent interior access. In other words, if you have a door from the outside into a foyer, then a door into the accessory unit and the primary unit, that would be a permitted ADU. The city's current ordinance and the minimum ordinance under state law require two independent accesses, a door from the outside of the primary and a door from the outside to the second unit, to the ADU. The application sentences, the application section is relatively standard. The key to note there is that if an application for an ADU can't meet the ministerial, the ministerial standards, in other words, if they don't meet the minimums or maximums applicable set by the ordinance, they may still come in through a design review permit and be approved by the Planning Commission. So it provides a bit of an out for a unit that is close to but not exactly compliant with the ordinance. The heart of the changes are the new proposed Table A, which converts the existing narrative set of standards into a table set that has rules that vary by six types of ADU. There's new detached units, new attached units, attached to an existing legal primary unit. The next two types are mandated, mandated by state law. A new attached unit solely by conversion of interior existing space in an existing legal primary unit, or a new ADU by conversion of an existing legal accessory building. In other words, for those two types, one of the mandates of the new law, Government Code Section 65852 dot two subdivision E, is that if you have an existing legal unit, you can convert an interior portion of it by right with no rules to be an ADU. The two exceptions are, that has to have setbacks that are adequate for fire safety and has to have independent exterior access. That one, the city would be exceeding and allowing independent interior and exterior access. The same is true for an existing accessory building. If you have a guest house or a gazebo, not a gazebo, if you have a guest house, four walls and a roof, that's legal. State law now requires the city to approve conversion of that, interior conversion only, to an accessory dwelling unit. And the last two types are a new unit that involves a new second-story construction, expanding the existing bounds on the second story, and then a home split, which is a separately defined term, more of a traditional duplex. The table has the standards for zones, lot size, setbacks, lot coverage, unit size, parking, and guest houses. And on that one, note that another piece added by the Planning Commission that exceeds the minimum bounds of state law is that the allowance for an accessory dwelling unit to exist on a property that also has a habitable but small accessory structure. Here, small, not a size, but a set of rules. If you have a habitable accessory structure that has no more plumbing than a half-bath, so a artist's studio, an office, some sort of similar accessory structure, at present, you are not allowed to have an ADU as well, under the city's current ordinance. The proposal is to allow an ADU in addition to that. But you wouldn't be allowed to have an ADU and a guest house with a full bath and the primary unit. You'd have to pick between the ADU or the guest house.
Is that a state law, or a state requirement, or is that something that we are?
That is beyond the minimum of state law. State law only requires the city to allow both an ADU and a guest house if it's solely interior conversion of existing legal space. This would allow, for example, if you have a property with a house, a guest house, they could build a new ADU, as long as that guest house was, just had a half-bath. Right now, the code doesn't just differentiate between, if you have any, any building that has four walls, a building in its condition space, whether or not the bathroom count doesn't matter. So this would be an allowance for additional building above the present requirement, again, as recommended by the Planning Commission. It adds in an explicit prohibition for short-term rental. Right now, it's, the prohibition is built into zoning code. Here, it's made express. It continues to require that ADUs be owner-occupied, which means an owner, the owner of the property must live in one or the other, the primary or the accessory. The Planning Commission's recommendation is to build in a hardship exception that would allow specified facts to be proved to the Planning Commission, and thus allow someone, for example, an elderly couple that is moving into assisted living, to be able to still own the primary and rent out the, rent out the second. The requirement, the proposed ordinance maintains the requirement that an ADU that doesn't meet those standards requires a sign-through permit, or else an ADU that is two stories, or taller than fifteen feet, or on the second story. With the sole exception, again, of the state forced, if it's solely interior conversion of a second story, that doesn't need a design review permit. That's ministerial. And then, the ordinance reflects the council's action in April to not require impact or connection fees, nor to require excess, will-serv letters from the sanitation district or any other relevant utility. That's now codified. It maintains the state-required exemption from the growth management allocation and traffic impacts requirements. And lastly, there's no proposed changes to the second unit program. The only change there, the, pardon me, second unit compliance program, the only change there is to add into the code sections, ADU slash second unit compliance program, again, reflecting both the council's previous action and the new state, the new state nomenclature. That's a brief overview. I'm available to answer any particular questions.
I have a question. Again, I, I have a question that's just about the technical meaning. Obviously, we'll hold testimony, and then we'll deliberate. So I'm not asking a deliberating question. I want to be very clear. I am perplexed by the way the twelve-hundred square foot, or fifty percent of primary units' living area, is defined, whichever is smaller, when it states inclusive of any basement or attic. That means, according to the definitions elsewhere, that it's not fifty percent applied to habitable area, but fifty percent of habitable plus uninhabitable area. For example, the definition of attic on page three of fourteen is "area located between the ceiling of a top story of a building and the building's roof and not usable as habitable or commercial space." Basement simply means underground and could either be habitable or not habitable. So what it seems to do by saying inclusive of basement and attic without stipulating habitable space in basement or attic is saying twelve-hundred square feet would be applied to habitable plus non-inhabitable area. Is that the intent?
No, the intent is different. That is-
That's not what the words say.
The different intent is captured in a different definition, but I think we can fix this. The different definition is built into the next page, the definition of living area, which is the term that's referenced in the twelve-hundred square foot.
And it then says inclusive of any basement or attic. It doesn't state that the basement and attic has to be habitable.
It also has minimum dimensions. So I think what we should, the, in other words, the intent of the commission's recommendation was that it be, living area is defined as the interior habitable area with the minimum dimensions of eight by ten feet and seven and a half-
That was the intent.
Feet of headroom.
Intent was fifty percent-
Including basements and attics that meet that size definition. That was the Planning Commission's intent.
Okay.
Okay.
I think that's built into the present language, but you've identified a way that we can improve it, which would be to delete the reference "not usable as habitable" in the definition of attic.
Are we moving into?
No, I just wanted to ask the meaning of the words. That's it.
Your question's answered.
I'm asking for how to fix it.
Okay. So we, are there any other question about why we're here? Because my understanding is, the whole goal of this was to meet the unmet needs of housing and to make it affordable. And, well, that'll get into the whole question of how well the state of California. But a lot of this is mandatory. Are we not currently in compliance through the urgency ordinance?
Yes, we are, thank you. The urgency ordinance is fully compliant with state law.
And that will be in effect, or could be in effect, for how much longer?
The urgency ordinance isn't, was structured as no expiration date. It continues until the council takes further action.
Okay, so we are in compliance, and we have time to work through all these kinds of things. Okay, if there's no further question of staff, I'm gonna open this up to the public to, to comment. And let's see what we've got here in the way of cards. With Betsy on deck. There's a chair up front here. You can come sit in if you like.
Good evening, Mayor Johnston and councilmembers and staff. I left all my notes at home, so my carefully crafted comments are now gonna be a bit bumbled, so you'll have to forgive me as we go along. As Planning Commissioner, I was present for all these deliberations. And although Mr. Summers sort of notes a certain amount of unanimity in the report before you, I will tell you that three commissioners came and went during the time, from the time that we began those deliberations till the time that we ended. So not all commissioners had the benefit of all the discussions, all the background. So what appears to be unanimity, I will tell you, the deeper context is that votes swung wildly at different times with different personalities and just different decision-makers. So I think that's more the message, that this was kind of a torturous process that is as complicated as you will find when you go to deliberate the facts. But ultimately, our mission was to advise you on how to administer this new state law, which does try to foster the building of affordable housing, but also encourages public agencies to balance that building with the, the natural constraints of our community, specifically with regard to water, traffic flow, and public safety. The basic premise of this law is that if we create more housing, we increase the supply, we're gonna have more affordability. But that premise does not apply in a community with high real estate values, especially a small town, where there's going to be limited numbers no matter what. At the last meeting where this item got continued, you had on the dais a letter from the Board of Realtors. And eleven of the twelve directors of the Board of Realtors concurred that you can build a whole lot of second units and not even begin to touch affordability, because there is no shortage of money, people who want to be here and will pay very high rents. And I think that point's really borne out by the compliance program, where we also deliberated endlessly about how we were gonna bring a bunch of illegal second units into And we have done dozens of those, completed dozens of those units. And that hasn't touched affordability. So, oh my gosh, I'm yellow. But ultimately, two things that we really discussed a lot, minimum lot size and max unit size. Minimum lot size, there are nine hundred, our current minimum lot size for second units is ten thousand nine hundred square feet. We have nine hundred of those lots in the city. So if every house in the, are you gonna cut me off? If every house, if every property in the valley can be converted, every house can be converted into two units, and there's nine hundred lots that are ten thousand nine hundred square feet or larger, how many more second units are we really building? Can we even predict? Can we even predict how many more units are gonna be here? I'm also going to just say, please try to keep our, the minimum lot size to ten thousand nine hundred, and try to retain, try to, to limit the max unit size to something much smaller than twelve-hundred square feet. Smaller is the only way to even touch affordability. Up to twelve-hundred square feet doesn't really buy you anything. And let's try to figure out, before we make any decisions, how we're gonna assess the impacts. Thank you.
I have a question, on a point that you said of our city attorney. The concern that if everybody builds a second unit is irrelevant, because it's a state mandate, right? I mean, they're probably, it's probably not gonna happen. I mean, it's probably not going to happen, but that's not something we can prevent.
There's two questions built into that. The city doesn't have the power to prevent every house being converted with a purely interior conversion. The city does have the power, though, to adopt a lot size minimum that would limit the conversions that involve exterior construction.
Uh huh.
And of course, the issue is the policy question.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Rosalie.
Okay, Betsy? And we have Michael Haley on deck.
Hi, I'm Betsy Van Light. I am an Ojai resident, as of about six months. Mayor, council members, staff, thank you for giving me an opportunity to be here. The thing that I wanted to bring up, as I read through the ADU ordinance proposal, is that there's no discussion of tiny houses as one of the options. And I've been in discussion with people, especially Vina Lustado, who couldn't be here tonight, but who submitted a letter that you should have via email, who's been working on this for at least a couple of years. And tiny houses are something of great interest, as you know, nationwide, because they can be tremendously affordable, but nice quality, and they're very energy and resource efficient. And they can be really attractive, too. So it's interesting to me, because I was looking at video footage from a June 28 meeting, 2016, that you had, and you were discussing, actually, second dwellings. And there was a lot of enthusiastic discussion of tiny houses as part of that. The impression I had was that that was going to then potentially move into language in the ordinance. We know that tiny houses, their main problem right now is that they're illegal, because they just aren't discussed in codes and zoning. So this would be an incredible opportunity to bring them into the code, so that they would be legal. And I can just say for myself personally, I retired, I'm a retired university professor and administrator. I moved here last year to be closer to my parents. I'm doing a lot of volunteer work. I downsized. And I sold a house in Albuquerque, New Mexico, for $250,000. To buy the same house here would cost me $700,000. So it's, and I would rather be doing volunteer work and not be saddled with a mortgage and worrying about affordability. So for me personally, a tiny house would be a wonderful option. So I don't know if it just got dropped, or there are reasons that the language isn't there, but I would just strongly recommend reconsidering adding tiny houses in as one of the options. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question of the city attorney? Should I ask about that during the deliberations, why the language for tiny house was not included?
I can explain now, or I can explain during deliberations.
Yeah, let's do it.
Okay, thank you.
Michael Haley, that's me. Good evening. I was able to attend some of the Planning Commission debate about our discussion, and I did have one concern. I mean, I think, I think it's great that we're finding a way to provide more affordable housing for people, so I'm generally supportive of it. One concern I have is that some of these streets are very dense already, very densely developed. There was a lot of discussion about, as has already come up tonight, about maximum lot size. And I just am somewhat concerned about density, also about fire service. And I wonder if the fire marshal or the fire chief here has reviewed it, because, you know, you start thinking about these streets that are already pretty packed in, and then people start building things in back. If there's a fire, are they going to be able to get fire trucks back there? And has anybody really vetted that? And I think that's something that, if it has, if it had already been done, then, you know, I apologize, because I'm not familiar with all of this. But if it hasn't, I would recommend that the fire marshal take a look at it and make sure that, especially when they eliminated the minimum lot size. I know it hasn't been finalized, but if you're going to eliminate the minimum lot size, are you going to have enough room to get a fire truck back there if there's a fire? That's my concern. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And the last card I have is Tom Francis.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Again, thank you for your service. The staff report is wrong about this ordinance being exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. The city cannot claim this proposed ordinance is exempt from CEQA because it is purportedly not a project and/or because the proposed ordinance is not likely to cause potential significant environmental impacts. This is faulty reasoning and not supported by the law or facts. Under CEQA, an ordinance concerning land development is a project, because adoption of an ordinance is a discretionary act. Because this proposed city ordinance goes beyond the state accessory dwelling unit laws' minimum requirements and standards, it constitutes a discretionary act and is therefore subject to CEQA. Because it constitutes a discretionary act that could allow additional development on most parcels of land in Ojai by right with no discretionary review, it is clear that it will result in significant environmental impacts. And the city therefore must, at a minimum, conduct an initial study pursuant to CEQA. As proposed, this ordinance cannot be exempted from CEQA. I also wanted to comment very briefly, just on what the thinking was as far as not limiting the size of these units. Because my understanding is that the spirit of this legislation is to create modest, affordable homes for people to live in. If there's no limit on the size of the units, then obviously, they're going to be more expensive, because the people that build them on their property are going to want to recoup their investment over, you know, a reasonable period of time. So the bigger the unit is, the more expensive it is, the higher the rent is. But of greater concern to me is the breakdown of what we have existing in the city of Ojai. So I've got some basic numbers of single-family residential homes in Ojai. So there are almost 2,200 single-family homes in the city of Ojai. Out of that 2,200, let's see. Oh, wait, I've got my numbers wrong. Hang on a second. The 20, no, there's 2,200, sorry. There's 2,200, almost 2,200 homes that are two or more bedrooms. Okay, so it goes from two all the way up, there's one home that has nine bedrooms. But anyway, almost all of them are not one-bedroom. The number of one-bedroom homes in the city of Ojai is 51. So that means there's 40 times more family-sized units than there are, you know, maybe units that are appropriate for a couple or one person, when you're looking at the single-family homes. Now, this doesn't look at the multifamily buildings. I'm sure that that would help the numbers. But I just don't understand why you guys would allow a unit size so larger than what would be appropriate for one or two people, when clearly, that's what we're short on, and we have a lot of family-sized units. And many of those family-sized units have people that their kids are going to college, and they're probably looking for an opportunity to downsize. And I think your policy needs to encourage the downsizing and encourage people to move into a smaller unit. Because if they move, if a, if a family that doesn't need the big house anymore moves into the smaller unit, then the amount they need to charge to recoup their investment from a family that moves into the front unit would be a lot less, right? Because they're trying to cover their costs, right? Does that make any sense to you, Bill?
Yeah, we have a red light, though. Okay, so, thank you.
All right. Mayor Johnston?
Yes.
I'd just like to make a comment. The gentleman just testified-
Just a second. That's-
That's all right. I just want to say-
Stay it through the chair. Go ahead with your comment.
That there was no maximum. The maximum is, in fact, 1,200 square feet, or 50% of the primary area, subject to lot coverage. So I have really no concept of what he's talking about in terms of there being no limit. It's 1,200 feet, or 50% of the primary unit. So I just want to make that point of fact. That's the proposal in front of us.
Okay. Are we, late arriving mail here. Okay. I don't think I have any more cards, at least for this, this topic. So if there's no one else who wishes to address the council, is it Steve?
Thank you, Mayor. City council members and staff. As Mayor Protam Wierich said, there is, in fact, a limit of 1,200 square feet. That limit is further limited by setback and site lot coverage restrictions, which stay in the, in the ordinance as they are now. Third, as my fellow Planning Commissioner noted, there are 400 and some lots in the city that are larger than 10,960 square feet. I think that's the number that's in the ordinance right now. Another speaker here said there are 2,200 lots in the city. So the ordinance would say, the 80% of you who can't afford a big lot, don't get to build a second unit under any circumstances. And I don't think that's fair. We shouldn't be saying only people that can afford a lot larger than 10,960 square feet should be allowed to put a second unit on it. We took the limits off. They were 10,960 in residential areas. I think it was 7,500 in the VMU. And we removed those under the philosophy that the setback and lot coverage requirements would suffice to limit any additional dwelling unit or accessory dwelling, excuse me, to 1,200 square feet absolutely, and to less than that in many, many cases. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Okay, I will close the hearing and take this under deliberation. Okay, Mr. City Attorney? Okay, okay, hearing's closed.
Okay, I, can I start with questions? I don't feel ready to make a motion. I just have a lot of questions.
I have some questions as well.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I happen to be the Planning Commission liaison, so I attended all the hearings on this, and I sat on the edge of my seat for many hours as they deliberated. It was very, very painful. You just, you know, I feel like the Planning Commission worked extremely hard to come up with something that was fair. And I just wanted to make that comment. And then I do, at this point, I do want to ask about the tiny houses, because we've had, for the last two years, we've had a number of excellent presentations. And I, today I distributed an example of a code that included a code for second dwelling u, yeah, a code, an accessory, excuse me, a code for second dwelling unit, second dwelling, am I saying that right?
Accessory dwelling units.
Accessory dwelling units. I knew that was the right ADUs. That included, making tiny houses a legitimate second unit, accessory unit. Okay? So my question to you is this. If we, ideally, I would like to see that included in whatever we end up doing today or in our future meetings. And my other question is, is it better to consider that, can it be considered separately? Or should, because it seems like now we have a golden opportunity. It's been, somehow, it got pushed aside since last June, by coincidence. It's been a whole year since that presentation. If you watch that presentation, you'll see that you're left with the feeling that the city is going to come up with something. You know, there was, there was, so, yeah, that's my question.
Okay.
Sorry.
Thank you, Chair. The staff did not understand council's direction after the presentation from the gentleman from Fresno, who wrote the tiny house ordinance there, to be direction to draft the tiny house ordinance, hence, the current ordinance does not have allowance for tiny houses.
Okay.
The council retains the power to direct staff and the Planning Commission to consider a tiny house ordinance, either as part of the ADU ordinance or separately. If the council so directs, we will do it, starting from the Fresno model, so as not to reinvent the wheel. The tiny, the last piece of your question, tiny houses, there's some value in handling it separately from the ADU ordinance for two purposes, although, again, the choice is yours. One, you may wish to allow tiny houses in other locations that are, in other words, you may wish to consider tiny houses a legal primary unit, which would best be accomplished independent of the ADU ordinance. And second, it would allow consideration, tiny houses to be given full consideration. If the planning, if the council wished nonetheless to handle tiny houses as part of the ADU ordinance, which is within your power, it would need to return to the Planning Commission, because that would be a substantial change from the draft ordinance on your dais, on the dais tonight, and would have to be considered by the Planning Commission.
Okay, thank you. That's very clear. So I would consider to do it separately, since this is already so complex. But I really wanted to have that clarification, and I think the members of the public did it as well. Many people are wondering. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Bill, you said you had a question?
Just a follow-up question from Councilwoman Francina's. What, how would a tiny house be anything different than what we're looking at tonight? What would a tiny house have that would not be permitted under exactly what we have here?
It depends on the type of tiny house. There's two broad types of tiny houses. Tiny houses on wheels, and tiny houses not on wheels. A tiny house on wheels is straight prohibited. If the code prohibits any dwelling on wheels that is not a fully licensed and permitted mobile home, or, I forget the exact phrase, manufactured home. So if it's not through that process, and most present facility, most present tiny houses are not permitted as state-permitted mobile homes or manufactured homes, then they wouldn't be allowed. The other type of tiny house that's just little could be approved if it's stick-built, but most tiny houses tend to be off-site manufactured, not stick-built. And then, again, they don't meet the present state permitting for manufactured homes. But you could theoretically have a small, stick-built accessory dwelling unit that would meet the standards, as long as it also met the building code. I, as I understand, the typical tiny house, there's elements of the current building code that they cannot meet, but that could be approved through a separate allowance.
So that would be, we would still allow some sort of a prefabricated accessory dwelling unit, as long as it met all the code?
Exactly. It'd have to be the building code.
So the tiny home, if it met the code requirement and didn't have wheels, it could be approved as well?
That's correct.
Yeah, I had that same question.
Under the exact, under this particular-
If it met the standards, both of this ordinance and the building code, and doesn't have wheels, then you could have a prefab ADU.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and the other thing that caught my attention was-
It's Bill's turn.
I'll defer to a quick, a quick, a quick.
Okay, go ahead.
It was when you said that we, if we deliberate it separately, it could be a primary unit and also/or an accessory dwelling unit.
If that was the council's choice, yes.
Yeah, okay.
You could make that policy choice.
Okay, thank you.
I'll have to make a comment, then I have two questions. One, one thing you, I think, I need to add to Paul and answer to Paul, is that the, if you look at the Fresno model that they performed, for example, on tiny home templates, specifically, they say if it looks like a house, but it's on a trailer frame, that is not subject to Title 24, is subject to another code. I think it's ANZI 119-2 and 8 or whatever.
Which is one of the state manufactured home codes.
And what, the point of that is that reduces the cost significantly by not having, being on a mobile home code, looking like a house, as opposed to having to be Title 24, stick-built. So that's one of the cost-reducing factors. Just want to point that out. It makes up for affordability. My question is, is there, the 15-foot maximum? I was wondering about the 15-foot maximum for, it's on page six of eight. It says, "Design Review Permit Requirements," that a design review is required taller than 15 feet. I noticed that in our code, the exemption for single-family residential dwellings is 24 feet, or two-story. 15 feet, by the time you put a crawl space in, anything more than an eight-foot ceiling and an attic, you're above 15 feet. And I'm just wondering, the rationale for the maximum height being 15 for the ADU, as opposed to 24 for the primary unit, especially when there's other language saying the second unit is supposed to basically mimic the design of the primary unit?
I do not recall the Planning Commission discussing that particular 15-foot requirement in detail. As I recall, staff's analysis is that the 15-foot requirement was built into the original urgency ordinance in order to both meet the state requirements and still preserve, at the time, as much broader review over second-story, second units as possible. It doesn't have to be 15 feet. It's a straight policy choice.
The issue of consistency with 10-2.2003 did not come up in the Planning Commission deliberation, as far as your-
Not as I recall. It could be adjusted to make it 24 feet, and that wouldn't have to go back to the PC. That's a minor change.
I just asked, I just noticed the difference in the code, and that's what I'm asking about. The other thing is, is there any issue brought up as to, given the number of single-family residences on parcels in the C and BP zones in our city? on parcels in the C and BP zones in our city, is there any particular reason why, when we were adding zones, it didn't add C and BP?
The planning commission also did not consider that question. I, we didn't present, staff didn't present to them analysis of the numbers of single-family homes in C and BP zones. I wasn't aware that there were that many single-family homes in those.
Along Ojai Avenue, along Aliso, and some other streets in town, yes, there are.
Okay, that would be a policy choice for the council.
Okay.
But is your, is your question as to the total inventory of housing or to permit residential to be expanded within those other zones?
Yeah, I was asking if there was a reason why we would not want to have some, if we had a single-family residence on a parcel in one of those zones, why we wouldn't want to allow a second unit in those, on an existing residential parcel in those zones. They tend to be, one thing I, the reason I asked is those, if you look at our zoning map, those tend to be close-in zones to the town core. And personally, I prefer infill close to the town core. So, anyway, that's my, I just wanted to raise the issue if that had come up for, in the discussion.
Yeah, it did not come up with the planning commission. One final point to note on that is that that's one that's fully within your discretion. The state mandate requiring the city to approve ministerially interior conversions applies only to single-family residential zones.
No, I understand.
Okay.
I understand that very much.
Make sure the public understands that point.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have some thoughts, but I thought we'd first have a Q and A round.
Okay, Randy, go ahead.
So, I just, I had two thoughts. First thing is getting back to what Councilman Wyre just said regarding the infill in the VMU and into the town core. It's interesting, the town core's the oldest, has the smallest street, the smallest street size. It's already impacted in general. So, it's interesting to me that, that's the difficulties in crafting something like this, is there just, there's so many variables. So, like, for me, I look at where I live, up on Pleasant. That's streets, you know, four car-wide. I mean, there's plenty of places in this community where traffic isn't an issue. And then there's plenty of areas in this community where traffic is obviously a big problem. So, it, like you said, just demonstrates the complexity. Can, can we have the, can we have Matthew discuss the SEQA issue that Tom brought up? I just would like some clarity on that.
Happy to discuss that.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. The city's approach here is both exempt and not a project. The public commenter may have missed that second piece of the SEQA discussion in Section 6 of the proposed ordinance. First off, it's exempt from SEQA under Section 15301 because in, at its heart, pardon, Section 15301 of the SEQA guidelines, at its heart, this adjusts the rules slightly for development on existing sites. Second, because ADUs are on, there has to be an existing primary site. So, it's existing sites. That would already, that building a single-family house would be exempt from SEQA, so too is adding one more unit. Bear in mind that the exemption under 15301 allows up to four houses to be built. Four single-family houses exempt from SEQA. Two is exempt. Adjusting the regulations rather for two is exempt. Second, 15308 allows actions taken to protect the environment is exempt from SEQA. In this case, meeting the state mandates, expanding upon those slightly in ways that, taking into account the city's local character through maintaining setbacks, lot coverage, and similar requirements, preserves the city's aesthetic character as possible under the state law, and thus is an action taken in part to protect the environment. Most importantly, under guideline Sections 15061 subdivision B3 and 15378 subdivisions A and B5, these proposed changes are not a project under SEQA. They are discretionary action, but they're not a project as defined under SEQA because there's no potential for direct changes on the ground from these, from these changes. What you're adjusting is the zoning code, but it doesn't actually prove any development. Any further development has to take a choice, independent choice by a homeowner, to come in and apply for a permit, and then would be approved. And lastly, the delta between the proposed allowance here and the minimum state mandates is relatively small. And everything states forcing the city to do automatically is exempt from SEQA as a ministerial action forced by the state. I'm confident that this ordinance is exempt from SEQA. Thank you.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I, I'll make a motion with some amendments. But if somebody wants to make a motion without amendments, I'll stand aside. But I, there's some things I'd like to see changed. That's one alternative. Another alternative would be to make a motion to suggest changes for the corrected ordinance to come back for us for review again because, you know, we may have, get into confusion about what we're actually voting on.
Right.
So, I would say, I'll try that.
Well, I think, probably the easiest way to get started is to have a motion to adopt what is before us and then start amending it as we go, so that we can keep track of it. Is there, is that...
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion moved in seconds. I don't know if everyone's finished their discussion. Again, according to protocol, the chair is supposed to wait till the end of voice opinions or to enter into this. I have several thoughts on this.
Point of order on the motion?
Well, what?
Does that mean the vote would be for approving it as written and then making motions for further amendments?
No, the, a motion of the, you have the first order, a general motion, is, has the lowest priority. Now, we have it on the table because we have a motion in second that somebody would like to see this be adopted.
Okay, yes, sir, I understand.
And now we go to the motion.
No, but you, you had the floor, I'm sorry.
Right.
Yeah. I was, point of order I was asking.
And the point of order is?
About the structure of the motions. But you had the floor on the, on your opinion.
Okay, I'm giving you the answer to your question. I'm trying, at least I'm trying.
I got it, I got it.
You got it, okay. So, we have a motion on the floor, and that motion can be amended. Now, I know that our city attorney or parliamentary authority likes, I guess, substitute motions.
You can amend too. The prior motions were substitute motions, but you can always amend as well.
Right, okay. So, we have a motion, which is to, the planning commission's recommendation to us, and now we can modify that if we choose or not. I'd like to make some just general comments. And starting with my background, I was licensed in real estate sales, both in California and Arizona, and was a broker in California, and had a development company specializing in affordable housing. And I guess with that as my background, I'm having real trouble with what the state of California is doing right now. The state of California is greatly frustrated because of RENA numbers that have not been, you know, there are people who have designated property to be developed under their RENA numbers that's underwater. You couldn't build anything there. And so, Sacramento is saying, "Come on, you guys, we want something done." There is another law going through right now, this week, being heard in committee, that is going to preempt all of us and all of our rules, which means to me that the most important thing we can be doing is updating our general plan. Because if that goes through, most of this stuff is going to just be meaningless. So, let's go to what is the goal of this? Now, my personal goal is to try to provide affordable housing for those who, as somebody mentioned, downsizing, and their house could then become available for a family. And for young people who are working in our restaurants and working in our businesses around town, or just like to be close to home, they grew up here. The only way you're going to do that, basically what drives price is the price of the land, the size of the building, and the size of the lot. And if you don't control those things, there is no affordability. So, my goal is, is affordability. It's not to say, because we could always subdivide orchards and get more houses here. That would be easy. The developers would be thrilled. When the state came down on this, they turned every house in town into a potential duplex. Right now, we have that. Is that not correct?
Yes.
Right, okay. So, we have 2,200 houses. Not that this would happen, but theoretically, we have 2,200 new units. Now, some of those already exist because people rent their rooms out. But we could do that. So, right now, just with the urgency ordinance that we have, we have gone quite a ways if somebody was interested in doing this. But we are a desirable area. I built in Lancaster and in PRA, Arizona, in places that were cotton fields. And you can build affordable housing out there. People will go there. That's not what's driving the price of real estate in this valley. So, we have to be extraordinarily cautious. And I would say, and now this is not my terminology, but it's been given to me, called, and I think, I've heard a lot of people use it, affordable by design. The only way, if we're going to target this and have some control locally over the increase in population and traffic and actually provide the affordable units, they have to be small units, and we have to have a minimum lot size. Otherwise, the gates are wide open. I don't view this as a property right and what's fair for one person to be able to do it versus another person because we already have that problem. When we created zoning for the city, not we in Ojai, but in general, when the concept of zoning, not everybody can do the same thing on their land. And so, if we're doing this to try to create affordable units, we got to be careful that we haven't lost track and are starting to think in terms of people who used to be in the business I was in, which is, how do I increase the multiples? Because when you look at land price, that's what you look at. I was a land acquisition person. And the first question that would always be asked, you know, we don't care what the price is right now. We need to know how many units. What are the multiples? That's what drives all this. And so, we already know we have doubled it just by the state's imposing the law. And we have another law looming that we don't know if it'll be adopted that's going to preempt us as a city from being able to control land use. So, I guess my recommendation is, is, you know, if we want to adopt a permanent ordinance, then the motion on the floor is to do that, that we modify that to maintain our minimum lot size. It's already, to a degree, generous. The county, I think it's an acre, and we're like a commercial quarter acre. But I think that, you know, the fact that the smaller the lot, yes, you could put more units on it, but you don't have to provide parking in most lots in this town under the new law. Why? Because we have a trolley that runs around town. And if you're within a half a mile of that trolley, you don't have to provide any parking. So, you can see, at least in my view, you can see what's going to happen if we're not real careful. So, my recommendation is, is that, and Bill, you may be planning to submit some amendments that would do this. If we had a minimum lot size and a maximum unit size right now to try to create affordability, we can always amend that later to expand it if we're not getting the kind of results that we're looking for. But if we do it the other way around, what we've done is we've just increased the price of real estate in this valley. And I can tell you that if I didn't live here and have to answer to all my neighbors, I'd look at it and say, "Hey, this is terrific. I'll buy three or four of these, and I'll build the extra units." Because when I work the multiples, I can get the rent. I talked to some people that are paying, well, maybe somebody can tell me, how much are people paying to live in modified garages in this town?
Eighteen hundred.
What, eighteen?
Eighteen hundred, somebody said.
Eighteen hundred dollars. My God, I can, I can get rich real fast on that, as can any of us. So, anyway, I just caution all of us, you know, why don't we either stay with what we have right now? Or if we want to expand, because I know the planning commission's done a lot of work, and their job was to bore, or drill down on this, and our job is to connect the dots in the bigger picture. We have air quality problems, and we got water security problems. Those should be, you know, the most important thing we deal with. And everything we do should be viewed in that, through that filter. So, you know, I would move to amend the, that we maintain our minimum lot size. Can I get a second to that?
Yes.
I'm not sure what, what minimum lot size are you...
Right, well, we're just trying to start narrowing it to different changes.
But wasn't Councilmember Wyre going to do amendments?
Well, we all are, we all are.
Okay, now, listen, there, okay, what's the order?
I'd like to, I'd like to stay on this unless you have a question on the lot size.
No, I don't have a question. I just have an addition.
Then, if I could. I have a question for you, Mr. Mayor. With your rationale, and you're saying the smaller the unit, the smaller the price, then isn't it absolutely the opposite what you're suggesting? Because if we have a minimum lot size, it's going to be a larger unit. Smaller lot size with coverage issues and setback issues, it's going to be a much smaller unit. To me, it seems like allowing the units on a smaller lot size is going to make those units much more affordable. Whereas, if you have a minimum lot size, you have a much larger unit, it's not going to be affordable.
Well, part of what you say is accurate. But I have two amendments I'd like to make. One is minimum lot size, and the other is maximum house size. When I built houses in Arizona, and they were not mansions, but a 1,200-square-foot, three-bedroom home was very, it was affordable, but it was a family home. There was not a, you know, a second unit on a property. But if you're going to build a 1,200-square, but home, you sure don't want to put it on in the backyard of a 10, you know, 1,000-square-foot lot, I don't think, so...
I believe that's where lot coverage would come in.
Right? Okay, anyway, I just, I've said my piece. Now, okay, Paul, go ahead. Do you want to follow up on what you were...
No, that was my only, I, I think that the lot coverage size, the smaller lot, is going to lend itself to a smaller unit, and a smaller unit's going to be more affordable. That's why I don't, I'm not getting the rationale behind the minimum lot size. It seems if we do that, we're going against, we may be limiting the number of units, but we're increasing the price.
Well, no, the rationale is, is not to have the total floodgates. We don't need 1,000 affordable units in this town. We're four and a half square miles. We only have 2,200 homes right now. That would be like a 50% increase in population. Who's going to live in those? You're going to bring more people into the valley? We don't have that many jobs, you know? Okay, Randy?
First of all, it's a great discussion. My thoughts are, why don't we, instead of making an amendment and voting on it immediately? Because the conversation is, could probably cover or come back to one of the amendments. Can we just write the amended down, the amendment down when we're done with the discussion, then come back and vote on them one at a time? That would, that's one suggestion.
Okay.
Yeah. And then the, the thing that I wanted to bring up is, in the accessory, the accessory units that we've had on the books for the last, what, five years? How many, Steve, do you know how many we've done? Twenty? Twenty-five? So, in five years, I can just say we have not done a lot. Steve, if you'd like to respond?
Sorry, I don't have that off the top of my head.
I'm pretty sure it's about 20, 25. It's not, it's not a lot.
Yeah, it's not a lot.
In five years. And so, part of this conversation comes back to value and who's going to do these units. And the reality is, in five years, if we've, if we've modified 25 units, which is five a year, I don't necessarily see us building 1,000 or 2,000 or even 500 in the next five, if not 10, if not 20. That's the problem I have with affordability in that discussion. Because the reality is, it doesn't necessarily make something affordable Because the reality is, it doesn't necessarily make something affordable just because you build a unit. You still have, as a contractor, you've got to recover the cost of fabricating this, this unit. The benefit on the affordability side is you don't have to rebuy the land, you already own the land. So, so I understand that, but the reality is, if we really want to get into the nuts and bolts of affordability in this community, we need to look outside of these two boxes, because they're never going to meet the needs of this community. I'm just, I, that's how I feel about it. Now, I'll vote for this, because I think there's some good things in it and I think we can amend it properly, but my gut says, the reality of it all, we're never going to meet the needs of the needy or the people that need these affordable units. Needy is not a good word. In the community, unless we decide to actually set aside and do some affordable building of these units. So, I think this conversation will be void unless we acknowledge that.
I, can I, I totally agree. There's a line in the letter from the Board of Realtors, if you want real affordability in Ojai, someone has to build an affordable complex where the rents are restricted, period. I would say that that's true and also that we legitimize less expensive housing, like tiny houses and other alternative housing. So, those are two things. So, what I would like as part of this discussion is to have, as soon as possible on the agenda, I want to identify the lots that the city owns, because it seems like every day I find out a little bit more, you know, I'm not up to speed, exactly how many lots the city owns and what is preventing us and what do we need to do to build affordable housing on those lots. I think that that should be part of that, this discussion.
Well, I think it should, we need to do that as a, as part of the future agendas.
Yeah.
Right, okay, so, so we'll come back to it.
Yeah, as part of.
So, right now, the, the motion on the floor is to accept as submitted and recommended by the Planning Commission or to modify it. I suggested that we have lot and house size as one way to stay in control. My, my feeling is, is we shouldn't do anything more than the state requires us to do, because they've required us to do a whole lot more than we're probably capable of doing, or handling, and we're going to have to deal with all the problems that come from that. It just seems like going beyond what the state requirements are, is we're doing it to ourselves rather than.
Mayor, thank you. I'm going to come at this with a little, slightly different perspective and then I have amendments to offer. Something that hasn't yet been discussed, but it gets to the issue of protecting ourselves from negative consequences of state mandates. And that, I think, as a rule of thumb, the better we do with our RENA numbers, the more protection we have from undesirable mandates. That was the, you know, you can, staff can correct, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's the rule of thumb. And that was the primary motivation behind the second unit compliance program, was to, because that, since our general plan states that second units are affordable by design and since the State Housing and Community Development Agency accepts second units as affordable also by design, it helps our RENA numbers without having affordability covenants. And our, and our RENA numbers are requirements that we're supposed to show in our reports and the, and the better those are, the better, the better we are in terms of somebody coming in and mandating the kind of development that we do not want. Allowing infill is certainly something that Sacramento is pushing and managing infill in a way that we find more acceptable than alternatives in terms of new construction is also a way of helping us with our RENA numbers. And so, I come, that's where I'm coming from, because the, this kind of infill is deemed in our general plan, affordable by design. You've heard, you quoted accurately on that. Where it states, new second units in our housing element are deemed affordable for moderate income households by design, as such, affordability covenants would not be required. Furthermore, second units are exempt from growth management and traffic impact studies. So, the point is, is that, you know, what kind of RENA numbers do we want? And I think that well-managed second units, both compliant and new construction, is a better way of managing our, the character of our community than, than the alternative. That's just where I'm coming from, all right? As I look at the, as you state, the threats we have coming from Sacramento.
Right, now, I fear that, you know, that, that strategy that you just described is a good strategy and the one that communities should be using, but I think the train has left on that one. I think Sacramento has decided that we're not, our RENA numbers are just a ruse, not Ojai's, but every city's. Even LA's, you know, getting hammered. I mean, think how big they are.
Well, and again, I, I'm not, we'll see where that goes, but I just, I just want to bring that perspective. And as such, I've got some amendments to offer, but I, I don't want to cut off the debate.
Can I just add one comment? Ojai's RENA, RENA numbers aren't ruses. Our RENA numbers are real. We have identified locations. It's just, there's nobody that wants to build on them. That's the issue. We haven't had the development. Our RENA numbers are perfectly acceptable. We have overlays on plenty of lots. It's, nobody's coming forward to build any affordable housing.
Well, SB 35 is going to change that, I guess, but, you know, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, and the one time, well, I'm not going to get into.
But our, but our RENA numbers is, I don't, I don't know this for a fact, but I've been told that we have a disproportionately higher allowance that we accepted as a city than our, the size of our community would otherwise warrant.
In my reading of the history is we didn't challenge appropriately at the time.
Right, yeah.
And we need to challenge appropriately when the next round. And I hope that staff makes us well aware at the initial stages of that process that we do challenge, because I think the idea that we had, kind of a head in the sand approach in the last cycle towards the RENA numbers and now we got, you know, but nevertheless, we're not going to see elimination of them.
And that's, that's not a Sacramento issue, that's a SCAG issue. I mean, the other ones that assign us the numbers. Maybe we can do a better job at SCAG, but Sacramento's not the one dictating our numbers. And our numbers are fine. I mean, we read, we, we met our threshold for areas that we have available for affordable housing. It's just nobody's coming forward to build.
And that's my point. The more that we can show RENA numbers, and that's the beauty of the compliance program, you get a RENA credit without any new construction and.
Right. But, but the reason I think that the Sacramento looks upon our quote, "RENA numbers" as a ruse, not just Ojai's, but all communities, is that we agreed, or as a community, we agreed for how many units? What, 400 or something?
About 345.
We did not challenge.
Yeah, right, okay, yeah.
Unfortunately, high number.
Okay, so, we have this high number, but we also have overlays on properties such as, and I don't wish to bring up a sore subject, but in our open space and park land to build some units, because I was told by a person who used to be on the council that they thought, well, nobody will ever do that. Well, that, you know, okay, that's sort of, that's sort of a dubious way of going about it. And even, and they may have been right, but that's why Sacramento is putting the hammer on us.
Chaparral's another, is another, for instance.
Correct, yeah.
You know, we have an overlay on Chaparral and we, you know, Chaparral isn't going to be put.
But the fact, the fact still remains that even with those two overlays, nobody is coming forward to build any affordable housing, even on the other overlays.
Okay, yeah, SB 35 intends to correct that and it's going to be draconian, I fear. And I don't think we, as a city, have taken a position on that. And I, I don't know whether, if there's going to be a vote on it in Sacramento before we can have it on an agenda, but it seems like we, as a community, based on the practice or the, the philosophy of this valley, we should be on record with many other cities in California who have gone on record as opposing that.
The league of California cities is against it.
But we, we should, I agree.
No, but they are asking us to do the same thing as individual cities and so far, we've kind of not engaged. Okay, well, we have a motion to approve the recommendation of the Planning Commission. Do we have?
I have some amendments to offer.
Okay, well, are we ready for an amendment?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, go, Bill.
Amendment number one I'm going to offer, see if it's acceptable to the motion maker.
Are you, are you looking at a certain page as you're doing that?
I, I could, I wasn't, but I'll, I'll.
It's not too complicated, otherwise.
Okay, well, let me, let me first, let me first state, amendment number one I'm going to ask for, is that every reference to primary unit's living area, comma, inclusive of any basement or attic, be changed to say, primary unit's habitable area and deleting inclusive of any basement and attic, and it's multiple references.
Mr. Mayor, that's an acceptable amendment. I'll amend my motion to that, include that.
Okay, we've got it.
One second.
Okay.
Next, it's the motion maker, if he's okay with changing the limit of 15 feet to be the same for exemption for design review as in our code for the primary unit, to be consistent and that be 24 feet as well?
Mr. Mayor, that's acceptable to me. I will modify the motion to include that. Is there a second?
Oh, second there.
No, Paul's just accepting it, so we don't.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think at some point on that, do we have anyone who can give us the logic for why the Planning Commission went at 15?
I asked earlier and there was none.
You didn't discuss it.
The Planning Commission didn't specifically consider the 15-foot versus 24-foot question.
Oh.
Mr. Mayor, I want to request that when we're all done with these amendments, that if, if Commissioner Quilisi wants to clarify some points, if we reopen the public hearing, a couple of times it seemed like he wanted to chime in.
Okay, well, we'll go ahead and make a list of what suggested amendments and then we can kind of go down the.
And I'm happy with separate vote on each amendment. I'm very happy with that.
Okay, well, so, yeah.
Because I'm going to get my list off my chest and then.
Okay, is that okay with you, Paul?
Anyway, you want to.
Okay, so, we'll do it by amendment. That way, we'll have a discreet vote on each one. Okay, go ahead.
I'm going to see if the motion maker would accept an amendment to add the permitted zones for C and BP zones?
Yes.
Okay, we just.
Can you run that one back again, please? Sorry.
Okay, either, either we're having the maker of the motion accept the amendments or we're going to vote on them separately. So, if we're going to vote on them separately, then we would just make a list of them and then we'll go down the, by the way, we only can do one amendment at, or, pardon me, two amendments at a time.
Oh, okay.
Okay, well, just do, are you, are you prepared to go with the first one and we can?
If we want to vote them as, now and then we get back to more amendments, sure, let's vote on these.
Okay, so, why don't we go with the first one, which was, the primary residence shall be limited to habitable, existing habitable space.
Yeah, change, change the language of living area to habitable area, deleting the phrase inclusive of any basement or attic.
Okay, now, we're, we're going to probably have this redrafted, right? Are we all agreed on that? This is just.
Well, yeah, is it not a final vote?
Yeah, okay, okay, so, we have.
Mr. Mayor, I just have a point of order for Mr. Summers. If the original motion is on the table and the, the first amendment is made to it, we're voting on the original amendment, we're voting on the original motion plus the one amendment?
No, no, just the amendment. What they're doing is modifying.
But what are we amending if there's nothing to amend?
The amendments would be voted to, voted on individually then to amend the underlying motion.
Okay.
And then, once the, all the amendments are voted on, that would constitute the underlying motion as amended and then that would be voted on to approve or reject.
Gotcha, okay.
All right.
Okay, so, the first suggestion that we have is that we change, issue the definition or the allowable space to be calculated for purposes of the ordinance, is to use existing habitable space, okay? Is there any discussion on that? If not, we can go ahead and vote on it. Okay, it's, it's a little less generous than the Planning Commission was being, but I think, I can understand where you're going.
I think it was the intent of the Planning Commission.
Was it, you do? Okay, okay.
Everybody's.
I'm, if I could jump in on that, within your power, but I understood that the Planning Commission had the opposite intent.
The way it's written, it's the opposite.
Anyway, I'm, that's my.
But it's still within your power, of course.
Yeah, okay, so, we're being a little more restrictive, okay? Let's have a vote.
Councilmember Blatts?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
I just don't feel like I understand what the Planning Commission was intending to do, so, I guess the best thing, I don't want to abstain.
You can, if you want.
No, I'll just, I'll just, I'm very, really wary of, of changing that unless it, I heard two different things. Someone said that was the intent of the Planning Commission and then you said you understood it to be the opposite intent of the Planning Commission.
There was a clear definition of what, you know, how much space in the attic and how much headroom in the basement, so it seems to me that they, whether they did it intentionally or not, the effect of the way they wrote it was to expand the number of square foot, footage calculation that could be made and Bill is drawing it back down to existing habitable space.
Okay, yes.
Okay, so, is that your vote, yes?
Yes.
Okay, so, we got, keep going now.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Wyrek?
Yes.
Okay, okay, so, then you had a second amendment. You wanted to raise the 15 feet to 24 feet.
Correct. To be the identical with the primary unit height limit.
Okay, and we, near as we know, the Planning Commission did not consciously address that issue, so.
Correct.
So, any, any discussion on the difference in height? If not, call the roll.
Mayor Protim Wyrek?
Yes.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatts?
Yes.
Okay, did you have another one?
I had, I had, I had a couple more, but I didn't want to get caught up in Robert's rules.
No, you can, you can do them individually, because we're voting them, so now that's all part of the main motion.
I'm going to ask for an amendment to add the C and BP zones as permitted zones.
Okay, is there a discussion on that?
Would you clarify for my benefit and for the audience what, exactly what that is?
Well, for example, along Aliso, you have homes that are in a commercial zones that are single-family residences. Along West Ojai Avenue, you have single-family homes that are in the BP zone, business and professional. I don't, yeah, I don't necess, I would just as soon have houses rather than more offices.
Yes, okay.
And, and so, that's why I'm saying, that's why I'm making, offering the amendment.
So, in a way, what you're suggesting is there be a legal non-conforming.
If there's already a primary unit.
If you, if you have it, you're already there, you're legal and you get to apply the same standards any other residence does.
Correct.
You're not suggesting that we now have more residences built in all our commercial and, okay, we got it. Okay, other discussion? If not, call the roll.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatts?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Wyrek?
Yes.
Okay.
Mayor Johnston, I have one more, if, if that's okay, unless someone else wants to weigh in.
No, you're not being greedy, Bill. Go right ahead, it's okay.
And this maybe is somewhat more debatable, and that is, I have concern about the deed restriction on two levels. One, if we're going to continue the owner-occupied deed restriction, I want the hardship exemption defined protocol to be able to be granted by the Community Development Director and not have to go to Planning Commission. Reason that, for that is that hardship exemptions are sometimes quite emotionally sensitive, you know, trying to explain, well, you know, my, my grandparent or my parent is having health problem. I don't think that kind of thing is appropriate for a Planning Commission deliberation. I think you define the protocol and then if it meets that protocol, you grant the hardship exemption if we, if we keep the, the deed restriction. I'm not convinced about the deed restriction. I'm, I'm, but, I'm, I'm particular, so, the form I'm particularly committed to, and, and so I would offer that we, we first, I'm going to, for the purpose of debate, offer the amendment on whether we eliminate the deed restriction.
Okay, discussion?
And the maker of the motion would have to accept that for debate.
No, no, we're doing amendments.
No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Okay, so, now we have, you, you made a motion. Is there a second to that, that amendment, which is to, to eliminate that particular provision?
Well, I'll second it, but I just want to clarify it, because Bill, Councilman Wyrek, you just talked about two things.
Yeah.
First of all, you talked about the hardship exemption and, and going from Planning Commission to Planning Director, and then you just jumped into removing deeds in general.
Which would eliminate the issue.
Okay, so, all right, okay, I'm fine with that.
I would proceed with great caution on that one, because a lot of the, a lot of the, to make this work, it's, it's completely different. If the owner lives on the property, he's not going to build an ice sore, because he's got to look at it. He's not going to just max out his property so he can have all these rent, you know, higher rent, because he has to live with it. If somebody builds a second unit next to the house they're living in, they're going to want a little green space, usually in between the houses. So, I am not, I'm not in favor of removing the deed restriction at this point, unless there's some safety things that we can, can put in.
Is there other, other comments regarding this one?
I'll withdraw that request then. And if, if no one else, and, and what I'll suggest then is.
But you had a second to it, didn't you?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so, it's on the table, yeah, well, it's on the table. I, I would, I would also, I have, I don't know how effective we'll be at enforcing that provision, but I think it is worthwhile to do, because if you do not, what you've done is created for people, the old me, not the, not the current, environmentally sensitive me, but.
The new you?
Yeah, when I was in business, that would be a business opportunity. That would be kind of an inefficient market where I could make some real money, whereas if we keep it for our purpose, which is, is to provide housing for people who live here and for people who need to live here at an affordable rate, having that in there, and for people who need to live here at an affordable rate, having that in there, I think, is very helpful.
Okay.
Okay, other comments? If not, call the roll.
Now, wait a minute, I thought we already dropped it.
No, we have to vote on it.
Yeah, see, it was moved to second. Well, go ahead and vote on it.
Okay.
This is... these are amendments, go ahead.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
We're voting to not... I want to make sure what we're...
We're voting to eliminate it.
No, I don't want to eliminate it. If I vote no, is that...
That's correct, you want to know.
Okay, no.
Councilmember Blatts?
No.
Mayor Johnston?
No.
Mayor Protem Wyrick?
Yes. And so, and that failed, I would offer that we change the granting of the hardship exemption from planning commission following a public hearing to granted by the community development director if the property owner is able to establish a bona fide relationship to the restriction as follows.
Okay, so that would have to be crafted if we did that. You're just saying to not have to have a public hearing over the issue?
On a sensitive issue like that.
Right, okay, and they... and it would be based on a...
There's a protocol.
Yeah, protocols which are yet to be...
Well, they're listed A, B, C, right here.
Okay, and are those adequate to...
I'm fine with the protocol. A, owner is hospitalized or requires daily living assistance, that requires the owner to not be able to physically live on the property. B, the owner is on active military duty, unable to occupy, and C, the owner is deceased and the property being held pending dispensation of the estate. So, I'm fine with that, I just think it ought to be a decision by the community development director, according to that protocol.
Okay.
Okay. I have one question. Multiple rental units owned by an individual, how does that... how does this ADU affect that? Are they allowed... is an individual allowed to do an ADU on each one of these? Is that what we're talking about regarding the deed restriction? If they're not owner-occupied, are we taking another unit out of the discussion regarding having the ability to put an ADU unit on it? That's where I'm coming from on it, if it's the right question.
I'm not sure I entirely understand the question. Let me try to answer it, and tell me if I have the wrong answer. The... the wrong question, rather.
Ding 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 ding.
The...
Crossfire.
The deed restriction requirement effectively means that any individual may only own one rentable ADU. You own your own... you own your property, you live on your property, and you can rent out the ADU, or vice versa, you can live in the ADU and rent out the primary. It bars someone owning two properties, two houses, and renting out ADUs on both.
In my understanding, the owner has to be on the property.
Right, it has to be owner-occupied, not that they have to be there every day.
On the property, not in any particular part of the property, but on the property.
Correct, which means they can live in the...
Unless they have a hardship exile, and I just, like I said, my motion is just to... my amendment is just take that out of the planning commission public hearing realm and into the community development director realm.
And mine was just a clarification on property ownership.
Right, so this doesn't...
If I own six homes, what you're saying is I'm only allowed one ADU.
Correct, if you own six houses, then you can only have an ADU on one of those, the one you live on.
Okay, but once an ADU is built...
It may not be occupied under this rule. It... rather, it may not be rented. It could be occupied by... you could put family. In other words, to take it to a bit of an extreme example, but it illustrates the rule, you own six houses, you can get permits to build six ADUs, one on each house, but you can only occupy the one you live on as a rented ADU. The rest have to be family.
But this is only effective if you have a property and you want to build an ADU, but once somebody does that and then sells that property to a successor in ownership, how does that have any...
Oh, then the buyer has to, again, live on it, and then they can rent out the second ADU.
And if they don't want to live on it...
Then they can't rent out both units.
Yeah, okay, well...
That's what this restriction limits, is it prohibits someone from buying a house that has an ADU and rent it out?
Yeah, I understand how it's supposed to work, it's a challenge.
We need to have like a board game with cards.
Yeah, okay, so...
We have a...
So, Bill's motion is to streamline the process and to be somewhat sensitive to privacy, is that kind of a...
Yes, correct.
Okay, is there any more discussion on that? If not, we'll take a vote. Okay.
Mayor Protem Wyrick?
Yes.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatts?
Yes.
Mayor Johnston, I'm done.
Oh, okay.
Good, that was good.
Good.
Good points.
Okay, I would like to move to institute the... or to maintain the minimum lot size in the community. What is that, 10,900 or something?
Sorry, the current minimum lot size requirement is in two parts. 10,900 square feet generally, with a lower 8,500 square feet for the VMU, the Village Mixed Use Zone. That's the current ordinance.
Yeah, I'd like to just keep it to whatever our current rule is and not liberalize it until we know more about what's gonna happen. Is there a second to that? Deafening silence, okay. We don't need to vote on that one. I would also move to limit the size of the accessory dwelling unit to 600 square feet. Is there a second?
Nope.
Okay, that in effect is a vote on that. So...
I think...
We're sort of giving up on the idea of keeping, you know, creating units that will be more affordable to... okay, that will...
I just want to...
See who's right over time.
I just want to say, my line of thinking on that is that if it's owner-occupied, that will take care of the size of the unit, because an owner doesn't want some...
Well, see, I'm not concerned with the size of the unit from an aesthetic standpoint. It's just, the bigger the unit, the more expensive it is to build, or... and in the marketplace, the higher the rent you can get on that, and if we're trying to create dwelling units for people who can't afford a lot of money and either want to live out their days, as we saw a letter in the Ojai Valley News, somebody who was being evicted and they need a place to stay, they'd probably be thrilled to have a 600-square-foot apartment or accessory dwelling unit. And young people, there are a lot of them I know that don't have that many square feet in the garage they're running right now, including a schoolteacher I just talked to.
Well, the line of... the line of thinking, as I recall, with the planning commission not limiting the size was so that families... a family with a young child could live in a little bit larger unit.
Right.
Because we do need that. And my own... my thinking ahead is that if we have a tiny house village, which is my ultimate goal, and we do have these other alternative housing places, that that will take care of... you know, that will add affordability. So, I'm just looking in that direction.
I guess it keeps going back to the goal. Are we trying to have it affordability, or are we trying to increase the population of the valley by, in effect, subdividing without benefit of subdivisions?
Well, I wouldn't put it... characterize it like that. I would say we're trying to prevent people that we want to live here, or we're losing wonderful people because they can't find housing, so that's...
So, where are the housing... is the housing going? You know, well, we know where that... yeah, that's another issue, okay. Well, we don't have a second to it, so that... does anybody else have any amendments they'd like to offer? If not, okay, we've...
Need to vote on my motion.
Things that you... so, the main motion is on the floor. No further debate, call the roll.
Mayor Johnston?
No.
Councilmember... Mayor Protem Wyrick?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatts?
Yes.
Okay, the motion carries. Now, that's the first reading, right? It comes back?
That's first reading. We will adjust it to reflect these changes, and it'll be on your, I believe, next agenda for adoption.
Okay, and that doesn't require another first reading, does it?
No, these changes are not sufficiently substantial to require a second first reading.
Okay, fine.
Very good, yes, Bill.
There's an item in this, and I'll be... tell me I'm out of order of recommending it, there is a strong planning commission recommendation that for the R-04, R-02, and R-01 zones that do not have lot coverage standards, that the city council allow the planning commission to take that up and establish lot coverage standards for those zones. I'd like to make a motion that we so direct the planning commission to take that up. It's in this agenda.
It is within the agenda.
I'll second.
Okay, moved and seconded. I'm not... on which page are we looking at?
That's page four of eight, under Lot Coverage, R-2-4, where it states that the planning commission recommends that the council direct staff to bring forward a further code amendment separately to allow the planning commission to recommend to the city council establishment of lot coverage standards for the remaining residential zones that lack a lot coverage standard, the R-04, R-02, and R-01, and I'm making a motion that we so direct the planning commission to take that up.
Okay, any... so, we have... and we did have a second to that? Is that right?
Yes, we do.
Okay, so moved and seconded, discussion?
No.
No discussion? Okay, call the roll.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatts?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wyrick?
Yes.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes. Okay, are we done with that item?
Before we finish, you know, this is... this is still how I imagine a second dwelling unit. I hope... I hope I'm right. It looks like a tiny house.
I hope you're right, too.
Depends on the rules we set.
But people do a lot of things voluntarily, because, you know, they live there.
Okay, do we need a... yeah, do we need a five-minute break?
Yeah, I do.
Sure, yeah, okay, we're gonna take a five-minute intermission here. Okay, we're gonna take a five-minute intermission here. Take their chairs up here, we'll get this going, we got a lot to cover. And the hour is growing late. Before we start the discussion, I want to introduce Anna, who is our interpreter. And my understanding is, we do have some headsets, uh, for anyone who might need it for translation. Okay, with that, uh... Yeah, let's see, I've got... Okay. I have to confess that I'm, uh, a little confused on the process. Last fall, we had an ordinance, or the council had an ordinance drafted on the leaf blower. And after a lengthy discussion, the council directed staff to draft an ordinance that would ban all leaf blowers. And then in March, this came back before us, and Paul made a motion not to ban all leaf blowers. In fact, we didn't even really discuss that, it didn't even get made, I don't think. Did we, did we even have a motion on that? I don't believe we did.
According to the review of the minutes, I didn't see that there was any, any motion to introduce that.
Right, so it, it appears that those who directed that that be crafted had lost interest in that, and went on and made a motion to modify, uh, no, not to modify, is it to amend, uh, the existing ordinance? Or is it to replace it?
Uh, it's to replace the...
To replace the existing ordinance.
Okay, so it was a motion to replace the existing, uh, ordinance. And I requested that it be tabled to provide an opportunity to talk to the various stakeholders or points of view on the subject. Uh, and it, I think the minutes said that it was the mayor pro tem and the mayor, but in fact, it really, we after, that was a bit of confusion. Uh, Paul and I met with stakeholders, people who thought it was a great idea, people who thought they should abandon everything. Uh, it became fairly clear to me, it wasn't a barroom brawl, it was very dignified, but we couldn't agree. And most of the conversations I had individually, I concluded that there apparently was not much to be gained in the way of a negotiated compromise. But in the meantime, uh, with, under the auspices of the Ojai Valley News, Bob Daddy and others, uh, in cooperation with the city, we did have a demonstration, a new demonstration of technology showing what the battery-operated, uh, landscape equipment could do. Now, I didn't see that in the report to the council, but that wa, actually did occur. Uh, this thing came back to the council because, uh, I think it was last meeting, uh, it became evident that the action to enforce the existing law on the books uh, did not coincide with Paul's, uh, motion, and he had asked for his motion to be taken up again. So, tonight, we're taking up Paul's motion, and we will discuss that and see where that goes. So, I guess with that as the introduction, is there anything that you need to add to that, Steve?
No, I do not, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so I guess it's over to you, Paul.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, my motion is to, to, uh, replace the existing, uh, leaf blower ordinance in Ojai. And to try to come up with somewhat of a compromise from the issues. I know since that time, there's been a group that, uh, have looked at it from the standpoint of going to electric leaf blowers exclusively. And while that may be, while that may be a good idea, um, I think if you, if you are in favor of that, then you have to look and see why you would not be in favor of the new high-efficiency gasoline leaf blowers, because they are much more efficient now in terms of not only their, their noise level, in fact, some of them are less noisy than, than the electric blowers, but their emissions that they're putting out, unlike the two-stroke engines of days of old, are much more efficient. And, uh, there's certain things about the electric blowers that are, that are not as convenient as the new high-technology gasoline blowers. So my motion was to allow both the high-efficiency gasoline blowers and electric blowers, however, limit the time of use, because I felt that a number of people in the community expressed concern that they could be hanging their washout or having their windows open, and that people would come along and, and blow the leaf blowers, and the dust and things would come into their houses. So I felt by limiting all commercial use between nine in the morning and noon, Monday through Friday, that that would then give the entire city the entire afternoon, uh, where there wouldn't be any leaf, any leaf blowers. And then in, in non-commercial, uh, include Saturday and Sunday, only because a number of homeowners would be able to use the leaf blowers between nine and noon on those days. I thought that it divided, that it, it didn't allow the use all day long, I thought it was a good compromise. The other thing, part of my motion was that people would have to have business licenses if they're using it commercially, that their units would have to be certified as to their efficiency, and there would be some training that went along with it in order to obtain that certification. So that was the motion I had on the table. That's the motion that I would still like to bring forward for deliberation and consideration. And if anybody has any comments with regard to that motion, I would welcome them.
Okay, uh, with that as an introduction of what we are here to talk about, uh, we'll open it up to public comment, and I have some cards here. Uh, Leslie Ferraro.
Good evening, Mayor and staff, thank you for being here. So personally, I'm a little confused, because I thought I had seen that the no gasoline blowers was taking effect July 1st.
Yeah.
Did that...
It did, it's in effect.
So now we're just looking at it again. At some point, we have to stop looking at things and saying, "We're done." And I think stopping with gasoline leaf blowers is a good place to start stopping. We don't need the noise, we don't need the pollution, they're somewhat more effective by all means, but you're still talking about gasoline versus electricity. We're, I've said it before, we're meant to breathe air, we're not meant to breathe smoke, dust, and pollution. So I favor no gasoline leaf blowers regardless of the time and, and hours. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we have Sheri Ann Kate with Jay Simon on deck.
I do have a handout, um, that I have given to the clerk. And it addresses the city manager's, uh, the staff report on the left-hand column, and, uh, some talking points about the facts, as I understand them, and we are a group, Ojai Citizens for Clean Air, understand them. The enforcement that ban that you have right now in place with the gas-powered blowers is working well. We're already seeing that in, in the neighborhood. We have witnessed landscapers using rakes already, it's better. Uh, I don't believe that we need to go backwards on this at all, and I really am tired of coming to meetings, four years, sitting here until 10 o'clock at night. It's time to make a decision, it's time to get over this and move on. A Harvard study was just published in the prestigious New England Journal of Medicine, and this is a couple weeks ago. And I did send it to a couple of, uh, the council members today. It has a lot of, uh, technical jargon in it, but permit me to, um, summarize it for the council and the audience. Um, the investigators followed 60 million people. It was the total population of the Medicare recipients in the continental U.S. They were all seniors over the age of 65. They studied this 60 million-strong population for over a decade. This is the most robust study to date. They found a 13% increase in deaths with just a 10-microgram-per-cubic-meter increase in fine particulate matter. The greatest mortality effect was found in small communities like ours. These communities already had air quality requirements tougher than the federal EPA standards. My point is this, fugitive dust and fine particles equal health hazards for anyone over the age of 65. Which brings me to Whispering Oaks. We are told that this property is zoned commercial. The ordinance the city manager proposes would allow the use of gas-powered leaf blowers there, something these people have already had to stop once through the innovation, invention of U.S. Congresswoman Julia Brownlee. The only more possibly vulnerable population in Ojai would be found at the preschools. Under the city manager's proposal, they would be exposed to gas-powered leaf blowers as well, and this fine particulate matter. Enough is enough. Uh, please read the handout. The, uh, the, some of the, Ojai Citizens for Clean Airs have many serious concerns about this proposed ordinance. Please vote on it tonight, let's get over this.
Thank you, Sheri. Uh, Jay Simon is up, and Severo Lara on deck.
Uh, good evening, council members, uh, thank you for your service, I appreciate it. Um, let me state again why I am against leaf blowers. I hate being barricaded in my own home for extended periods while plumes of dust, noise, and exhaust fumes fill the air. I hate sneezing and wheezing and watery eyes whenever the blowers are around. I hate seeing the neighbors' yards blown free of every nourishing leaf and reduced to bare dirt. I hate seeing the blower operators sitting in the middle of a sound and dust and exhaust cloud with little or no protection. I hate the whining, piercing crescendo-decrescendo noise, something that no 65 dB label can change. And one thing that really concerns me is something we talked about earlier tonight through the Sea Frog Executive. I would hate to see Ojai be the first town to repeal a ban on gas-powered leaf blowers in California, particularly in light of the fact that we're trying to, to influence the Ventura County general plan to keep our very stringent air quality requirements. And here we are, re, going back, allowing gas-powered leaf blowers. It just seems to me to be the height of, uh, irony at, at best. Lest you think that I am a small minority, let me remind the council members that in January of 2016, the members of the Ojai Citizens for Clean Air collected 133 signatures in a few hours at the farmer's market. And that at the time, we were demanding a full environmental study by the city pursuant to their plan to reallow gas-powered leaf blowers, and not have a sequo, uh, study. These signatures were sent to all the current council members. And as was recently demonstrated in the OT, OT referendum, you ignore the concerns of your citizens at your peril. So, I would urge you to keep our existing ban in place and to not consider the existing, uh, to modification. Thank you.
Thank you, Jay. Severo, and Laurie Edgcombe, you're on deck.
Mayor Johnson, city council member, staff chief. I do wanna, I do agree with some of the fellow speakers that I think this is time to come to a decision. I think that it has been going on for quite a bit of time. And as you probably noticed, there's no other gardeners here, I did reach out to them, did let them know if they were gonna come. And I think, I think, uh, both sides are at a point where I think they want some direction, some clarity. Uh, with that said, I'm gonna take off all the hats that I wear in the community except for my landscaper hat. Um, I'm really proud to own a family business, and I've been really trying to champion a business that is all about sustainability. Uh, with that said, I think my main focus was on pesticides, trying to create something that was good for the soils. Uh, I have, um, explored other tools, um, during these last few weeks, and I have tried out some of the battery-packed tools, which I think is, uh, gonna be our future, and in, in my personal opinion, whether we as, uh, as in this industry like it or not, uh, just because of what was mentioned about the air quality. I think some of the statistics, some of the studies that, um, the group has presented is, is factual. But, um, I think that we also have to be realistic in our, in how we maintain our parks, how we maintain our landscape, uh, where all these particular, uh, particulates are coming from, 'cause there's multiple, uh, reasons why they come from, not just, I would say, uh, gas emission, but that is a very big part of where they're coming from. Um, but, uh, with that said, I just, I, I do wanna, uh, say that, uh, now I'm, I am encouraged to be moving towards a different tool, even though my fellow, probably colleagues will not like it. But I think that, um, we have an opportunity here at the city to add some practical, um, solutions to gardening tools, to small-engine tools. And I would, uh, encourage you to, uh, whatever you apply on, on the citizens here of Ojai and the gardeners, you also apply on yourselves. I think it's important to say, uh, to give a, a, a strong statement, um, with whatever you guys decide today. But I think that more than anything, I would challenge you guys to come to some type of agreement, compromise, however you guys might look at it, because I think, uh, coming together as a unified council speaks louder than anything. I know there's different points of view, different argument, different agreements, but, um, or different reasons. But I think that you guys could boil it together, and you guys could come to a decision that could, uh, that could be practical and reasonable, so, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a Severo question? You know, if you go to the City of Santa Barbara, uh, website, they have landscaping standards. And it's actually encourages both the homeowner and the landscaper to have a whole different standard. Instead of this clean 60s standard that was invented somewhere along the way, the city encourages, you know, mutual education. So you, as a landscaper, could be instrumental in educating the homeowner uh, the purpose of mul, of leaves, and why it's unrealistic, you know, 'cause we are, we're always talking about, let's face reality, to, to demand, you know, this super-clean driveway lawn and all that. I think we have to come, that's part of this, is to come to a mutual, uh, understanding among the landscapers and homeowners that our standards are, you know, they've been unrealistic, they're not sustainable.
Yeah, I, I think that if you wanna look at different standard, different design, I, I encourage diversity too within landscape. And I think there's other techniques and, and, uh, applications that you could apply on different landscape to promote sustainability. Um, I, I, I know that, that leaves are important, but, I mean, there's other things that we could do to add sustainability, so, thank you for your comments.
Laurie, you're up, and, uh, Charles Snyder, you're on deck.
Thank you. I've, I've been a resident of, um, Ojai Valley since 1981, and I've been a health practitioner for 35 years. And, um, I see a lot of patients with allergies and respiratory conditions, and I'm concerned about the air quality in Ojai and not adding any more emissions. And I would like to maintain the ban on, um, gas-powered leaf blowers and reduce the impact on the air quality. And, um, I am concerned about bringing up the, the dirt and the spores and the allergens that can cause, um, very intense valley fever and prolonged reoccurring respiratory conditions. And my, my partner actually, um, was a landscaper in the 80s. He, um, was digging up an orchard on the, um, other side, right across the street from Ojai, um, lumber. And he, um, was digging up the orchard and got stuck in lots of dust while doing that, and he actually died of a respiratory condition, probably due, possibly due to the spores in the, in the ground. So, these, um, dust clouds produced from the landscape are very, um, you know, damaging to the health and to the lungs. And, um, I just encourage anything we can do to promote better, um, health, um, practices in landscaping, and reducing the, um, gas-powered blow, blowers is a step in the right direction. We should keep that. Thank you.
Thank you, Laurie.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, Charles, you're up, and Michael Shapiro's next.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to follow my colleague, Dr. Colome, if that's possible.
Uh, okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, uh, city council, uh, I'm gonna take an unusual position, I guess, in, in the sense that I read the law and I kind of liked it. I thought, uh, it was very well-written compared to the other one. I can't qualify, or I can't comment on really the use of the gasoline blowers since I use an electric blower. And my focus and my only complaint about the law from my perspective is regarding non-commercial use. And I find the hours of nine to noon extremely restricted. Um, I sometimes hire a younger man who helps with my leaf blower in the afternoon after he finishes his real job. And, uh, I suspect that there are many others who have children and grandchildren who help them late in the afternoon when they're out of school or out of work. Also, and perhaps more importantly, by the Ojai municipal code, homeowners are allowed construction activities on their own home improvement projects seven to five weekdays, and eight to six on weekends. These type of activities often generate noise and blowing dust and debris in many respects greater than that, that a leaf blower would do. Uh, it doesn't seem to make sense for a homeowner restricted, restricted to leaf blowing from nine to 12 only. I think it would be a far better ordinance if it allowed homeowners to use their electric... I think it would be a far better ordinance if it allowed homeowners to use their electric blowers from 8:00 AM to 6:00 per the current leaf blower ordinance. In addition, from an enforcement standpoint, that would make a little more sense, because it would be covered approximately the same hours as homeowners would have for home improvement projects. I'd suggest modifying the leaf blower regulation to be similar to, but perhaps more restrictive than the existing leaf blower ordinance. I'd suggest 8:00 to 6:00 Monday through Friday for commercial operation, and for non-commercial use, 8:00 to 6:00, seven days a week, except legal holidays. Thank you.
Thank you, Charles. Okay, then Steve Colome.
I plan here to be uncharacteristically blunt. This frankly is bad policy, and it's bad because it can't accomplish the goals that it sets out to attain. It's essentially a rehash of the rejected proposal from September of 2016. And there, that's superseded by background and facts that happened to have been omitted in the administrative report dated June 30. So what were the emissions? First of all, that the suspension in 2014 was to only be a temporary suspension, actually at the time while that council was considering a complete ban on all blowers. It also fails to mention the Ojai Valley News demonstration in Libby Park, of which the city was a participant, where some very impressive electric equipment was demonstrated. It failed to mention the June 27 vote of the council to enforce the existing ban on blowers beginning July 1. It failed to mention the pending grant with the Air Pollution Control District for $60,000 to replace the city's gas-powered lawn and garden equipment. And it failed to mention the full-day demonstration that's going to, is scheduled to take place July 18 and was scheduled by the time of the June 30 memorandum. The draft ordinance in the supporting administrative report present a convoluted, burdensome, and unenforceable solution that is unlike any other ordinance anywhere in the state of California. You would think that at least we would try to template this with, with existing ordinances. Ojai, as we heard, has the second-worst air quality in Ventura. This ordinance, if adopted, would send the wrong message at the wrong time with the current consideration of the general plan update, as you've heard before. So why is this unenforceable and burdensome? The city actually has limited staff bandwidth to inspect and improve all equipment, so it's a staffing burden. Now, is that certification to be only by visual inspection, or is it to include emission and sound testing? Well, if it's the former, we cannot ensure performance compliance. If it's the latter, the staff does not have the equipment or protocols to complete that testing. This type of equipment, and I'm referring specifically to gas-powered equipment, degrades over time, leading to increased emissions. There are no clean internal combustion engines in these less-than-100cc displacement engines. And I'm sorry to disagree with the council member, it's an oxymoron. It just doesn't exist. Sound testing is complicated. It's unclear whether they're following the ANSI standard, the orientation, the operator, to the observer, throttle level, and direction. These are all elements that are included in this, in this ordinance, and they're ineffective. And I'll make one last point. Excessive dust is an undefined and unmeasurable term. A better term would be visible dust that can be verified either by observation or photography.
Thank you, Steve. Michael Shapiro with Martin Potter on deck.
Michael, you forgot your blower.
It's Halloween, what's going on?
So, in fact, can you hear me? Oh, yeah. This is the kind of respirating system, class III, and the goggles and the earplugs, that every scientific and federal and state agency say is required for the safety and welfare of workers operating any gas blower today. Frankly, something slightly less than this would be for electric blowers as well. And that is to protect them from the disease that could cause death and limit their lifespan because of it. Now, we as people who walk the streets, who drive our cars with our door open, and we pass a blower, we're not going to be wearing this in the car or as we're pushing our baby strollers. I think that all gas blowers have to be banned completely, utterly, immediately. Frankly, I think all blowers must be banned. Rakes, vacuum, battery, battery vacuums, rakes, brooms, and dust pans will do the job. It will protect and save lives. It's as simple as that. Now, how do we enforce all that ban? Let's say we do have the courage to do that. So if we could go to the slides, that I've been given permission to, to just show you a beautiful app from GovApps.
Got it.
Do I have to press something to get it on?
You just did.
Okay.
It's warming up.
Oh, it's warming up.
It's on.
Okay. So this is from GovApps. It's a wonderful, and they make this available to, the City of Santa Monica is actually using this today. People get this downloaded for free, all residents, on their cell phone right here. You're walking down, and you see a gas blower, you know it's an ordinance against gas blower, and you, first thing comes up on the app is this. It's a main screen. After you start the application, the default applets, they call, comes with the application. And you could even show, you could choose the new issue. I'm told the laser printer will not highlight on an LED, so I can't show this to you with my laser printer. But you could track, you could press new issue or track an issue that's already been part, something that you were tracking. You can also easily add additional ones at no cost. You use some of that use GovApps' internal applets. The graphics colors are all selectable. The guy who makes this possible did this, and I think he came pretty close to what Ojai would maybe look like if we chose this ourselves. So the second thing that comes on the screen, image two, this is the first screen you see, after you select a new issue, it automatically, the location and map of where you're standing are automatic through GPS. You can add a photo, add comments, your contact information, select a topic, as per this example. As you see, it's checked off, leaf blowers. Finally, well, almost there. The third, third image that comes up, this screen shows a topic being selected. As you see, there's a dot that's highlighted under the top topic of leaf blowers. And as you can see here, it's leaf blower, but the list is defined by the city, any way you want it to be defined. So obviously, you only list services that the City of Ojai offers. Image four, the last one to show you on this app, is the final image, shows a completed submission of a citizen's report. The photos come directly from the user's cell phone camera. And that's with, how this app works. City of Santa Monica has found it to be incredibly successful, and the planning person that I spoke with there says, no, there hasn't been a lot of taxing on the police force or any other agency that, that the citizens got behind it. And the great thing about this, it's a permanent thing, it's on now the computer at the city, so someone doesn't have to rush out of that moment because they think they're going to miss the guy in the middle of blowing. It's there, it's, they have it, and they could follow up with it later. It's not an emergency, and it's a great application. So don't be afraid of enforcing. Enforcement can work, and it can be pretty, pretty convenient at the same time. So if we're, again, I want to echo what my colleague said, if we're really going to show this county of Ventura that Ojai means business when it comes to protecting our existing area plans, air quality limits, and we're not going to allow them to take it away, we have to show them that we are, in fact, committed to this. Otherwise, they're going to think we're quite hypocritical in the way we proceed. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Okay, Martin Potter is up, and Sharon Aliski is on deck.
I don't know how I'm supposed to follow that. Martin Potter, One and Way, East Eucalyptus in Ojai. I am opposed to this ordinance. I don't believe it will withstand a challenge to the CEQA exemption. And whoever votes in favor of this ordinance, I will vote for whoever runs against you in the next election. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Sharon is up with David Borgen on deck.
I have been following this issue for several years, but this is my first time coming here to speak. And I just want to say I'm against the use of gas-powered leaf blowers, because I believe the evidence is clear that it's harmful to our health and to our environment. And I've read the recent staff report, and I was disappointed with its recommendations. It is taking our city backwards. It mentions the word mitigate, yet I fail to see how it will achieve any significant mitigation. I don't see how reducing hours of operations of gas-powered blowers will do anything to improve our overall air quality. And I know you're all aware that we have the second-worst air quality in Ventura County. I liked what Councilman Haney had to say at our last meeting, where he discussed visiting South Pasadena and seeing the kind of equipment that they're using there, which is environmentally safe, seems to be effective, and it has replaced the gas-powered equipment. That's the direction we should be going. I ask that we continue to ban gas-powered leaf blowers and begin enforcement. Electric leaf blowers are less than ideal for both sides, but I do think that they offer a reasonable compromise. I also think that we should help the landscape owners obtain new equipment through buyback and trade-in programs, but let's not get derailed, and let's not go backwards. Thank you.
Thank you. David Borgen with Deborah, is this McCombs? Deborah, you out there? If you are, go, okay, come on down. Okay, go, David.
Mayor, City Council, staff. I'm David Borgen, I live at Whispering Oaks. This past week, we had a reprieve, thanks to the Fourth of July, because Tuesday is always a landscape cleanup day at Whispering Oaks. So I got a chance to start breathing a little bit better until today, another Tuesday, and the landscape guys showed up on schedule with their blowers. So using electric blowers now, but the guy who is in charge of Whispering Oaks and area housing in general says that he's going to be using blowers come hell or high water, as long as they're legal in the city of Ojai. He doesn't care how many people get sick at Whispering Oaks, or die for that matter. I'm very, very ill with lung diseases, mostly attributed to the dust in the air of Ojai. I rarely leave Ojai, I walk Ojai a lot. I spend my time dodging leaf blower dust as I walk up and down Ojai Avenue on various days, zigging and zagging from one side of the street to the other to avoid another cloud of dust. And I don't expect to live much longer. My prognosis, my doctors are confused, they really don't know what's wrong, they won't really accept the fact that I'm breathing dust, and that's really the problem. Dust is poisonous, whether it comes from an electric blower or a gas blower, it's deadly. And I'm a living result of that, soon to be not living. Thank you very much.
May I ask a question? As I read your, your handwritten letter, it was two pages, but I forgot. You're living in a situation where the leaf blowers are actually just a few feet from your front door, is that right?
They come within inches, they come right to the doors now. They come up onto the patios in the back, and they come right to the front door, blowing dust into the cracks around our doors. We are literally held prisoner, or we have to get off the property. And the guy who runs the place, as I said, is in charge of area housing, he told me, I complained to him about this, that I had a choice. I could move, I live in a bungalow, he said I could move into the main building, which really wouldn't solve it, because the dust is everywhere. When you're 100 yards away from Whispering Oaks, you can see this pall of dust hanging over the whole place. He said I could move into the main building, or I could move somewhere else.
All right, thank you.
But they just, they, in fact, when I went home today after walking my dog, the blowers were at the mouth of the sidewalk that leads to my rural bungalows, and he refused to leave. I had to go through his cloud of dust to get home.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, Deborah with Jean.
What? I have a picture of our office.
Okay. Is Jean out there?
No.
No, Hank either? Okay, and then Ashley Osland? Okay, you can come on down and be on deck here. I don't know if it's me.
My name's Deborah McCombs. I have lived in Ojai for 28 years. I work at 1211 Maricopa Highway. I gave you a picture, and, you know, I do, I do see the use of leaf blowers, and, but I don't agree with the 9:00 to 12:00, because the first picture that I have there is at about 7:30 in the morning, there's nobody around, okay? Not a soul around, except for my car, because I went to take pictures. And the second picture, you can see, there's a gentleman there, and he's the man that runs the sweep, the street sweeper, and cleans the property. The second one is in front of our office, or the third one's the one in front of our office. The next picture, you'll see there's about four cars in the back of that parking lot, and that's about at 8:00 in the morning. So there's people coming to work. Our office opens at 8:00 in the morning. Out front at that, so then the next picture is at 9:00, this is how many cars are in our parking lot. It's full. And the last, next-to-last picture, that's out in front of our office building at 9:00. So we have a lot of business people coming to work, we have clients that are at work. So the 9:00 to 12:00 really doesn't work. The gentleman that runs the sweep, street sweeper, he has to blow to bring all the debris into, so he can sweep. So rakes and brooms don't really work in that big a size of a parking lot. And so I was kind of chuckling about the alternative leaf blowers, because he has to use a leaf blower before he can sweep the parking lot. And it, I don't know how it would be possible to do that between 9:00 and 12:00, because there's so many cars. And, you know, we have a lot of gardeners in our community that make a living, and I don't see how they would be able to make a living from 9:00 to 12:00. That just, the timeframe is just not, and we all use them, and they're, you know, they're part of our families. And, you know, a person who has a full-time job like myself, I can't clean my yard and my driveways from 9:00 to 12:00. So I really hope that, you know, we do need the use of that. And so anyway, that, just the picture shows you where, when we have people.
Thank you very much. Ashley?
Good evening. I wanted to read something, but I just want to speak from what other people have said. And, you know, the situation's out of control. There are people that are getting sick. The laborers are making money the way that they know how. Residents have bought these pieces of equipment because that's what's sold to them. But not a lot of thought has gone into what happens with these pieces of equipment. The evidence is clear that it makes people sick, people are dying as well. And I've always come up to speak, because my concern is about the laborers. And it's up to us as citizens, but also as government, to understand what health consequences are, and lead with good choices, lead the people into a healthy community. Okay? So I'm against all leaf blowers. I just think that they're ridiculous, and there are plenty of cities that are doing great without them, Laguna being one, but they don't have all the dust. But they, they went, they went there. But if we have to go into blowers, there are plenty of programs I've talked about before, which is the manufacturers that are ready to come and demo and give substantial discounts for an organized purchase of the battery and vacuum equipment. Husqvarna, which is getting exceptional reviews by arborists and landscapers in Santa Barbara and other places in California, is one of the best companies out there. Their commercial blowers has a three-hour rating for the battery with sophisticated diagnostic hardware. So I hear that there's some talk about that there's not enough time on the batteries, it's just not true. That's for residential little, little pieces of equipment, the, there's serious equipment out there for the battery. And let's talk about the gas blowers one more time. There are parts, filters, oil and gasoline that have to be changed, drained, and properly disposed of. That's only the beginning of the gasoline tool problem. Small, small spills in a yard or farm are common enough to warrant mention in an EPA report, which says 17 million gallons of gasoline are spilled each year refueling lawn and garden equipment. That's close to the Valdez thing. We know that was underreported, the Valdez thing, but that's, you know, the number that We know that was underreported, the Valdez thing, but that's, you know, the number that was reported. Effects on climate change and plant life aside, you have to consider how much of this the tool operators are breathing. It's not right, and it's not right for me as a citizen. I'm sick of it. I'm sick of breathing it, I'm sick of hearing it. It's just not cool. Out here in California, we have a high ethanol content in our gasoline, so small engine-powered equipment doesn't really run that well to begin with. Good battery technology gives contractors a way around it. Ease of use, quiet, won't disturb the neighbors. Little to no maintenance, lightweight, no fumes, no mess, powerful, efficient, non-polluting, and much more. Let's do something great for the laborers and landscapers and the residents. We're so close to doing something great, let's just continue on this path and represent intelligence. Let's be sophisticated. There's no, the, the leaf blowers altogether are the dark ages. We have to wake up and, and look at this pollution. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I don't know if this is a mystery commenter, but I have a card. It says speak on Agenda 3, but they didn't put their name. Is there somebody out there that expected to be called on that? No?
I want to speak, I'll take the card.
Yeah, okay.
Hey Cindy!
First, I want to apologize for the way I'm dressed. It's inappropriate for a city council, I think, but I have to get over it, because the issue at hand is much more important than the way I look. I am totally against the blowers. I'm so sick of having to say this over and over. I don't know why we're even back here, but it seems to be, no matter how much we discuss it, the guy on Tuesday still shows up and blows the hell out of the neighbor's yard, which is my neighbor, and has no knowledge of anything that we're doing here to protect him or the community, and it's business as usual on my street, no matter how much we talk about it. So I would love to have a little power in this issue and help, I don't want to call the police, they're busy, I do it anyway, but I called to see what the protocol was, because I read in the paper July 1st, they're going to finally reinstate the ban and enforce it, but these guys don't know that, obviously, because they're still doing it. And I think it's such a sign of disrespect to the community and our laws, that they don't care one bit, and they know the law, because they were all here a couple of years ago, and they all told me what a horrible person I was. But really, I'm on their side, because we're protecting them as well as ourselves. And if they knew anything about me, they would know that I am a big supporter of Latin music and "Yo hablo mucho español," anyway. So I would love to volunteer, to be an intermediary. I do it anyway. I know every, I know pretty much every landscaper, gardener on the streets of Ojai, because every time I see them, I will stop and reiterate the law and ask them if they even like that. And then most of them don't, and they feel they have no choice. And I hope for now on, well, they will have a choice, that they won't have to put their life and livelihood at stake, because if they're calling themselves gardeners, then maybe they should be gardening. Or we can just call them Mow and Blow and Joe, because that's all they're doing, if that's all their job entails. You know, if we're going to risk their job because they're not blowing, then that's all their job is. I don't think so. They allow them to say, no, we have, we do a lot more than just that. Well, then why is their livelihood at stake if they can't blow the leaves? So I think we had a year for a training point, there was retraining somewhere along the way, we were going to retrain everybody. I don't see that happening. We could use some community garden here to help sustainability, give these guys an upperhand on the new techniques of horticulture and permaculture and everything else that is the new age coming. And this is an artist community, so let's be artist-friendly, because a lot of people work in their homes, and they cannot be artists when that is going on all day long, everywhere. And that's why people come here, because they love the outdoors, they love nature, and we're just being very hypocritical if we don't move forward. So I don't see why we even have to speak about this again. And I'm appreciative that we are the majority once again in the audience, so please reflect the will of the people and vote no on gas and blowers and all of that, and thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask the city manager a question? There are handouts that Cindy could distribute, right? They're in English and Spanish. I don't know.
Yes, they're also on the website, and they could be, they could be obtained there.
Uh huh. But there's some that are already pre-printed that people could get?
Yes, yes.
Our topic is not enforcement right at the moment. It is Paul's motion is on the table. Well, it's off the table, we lifted it. So it's time to deliberate on the...
Can I start?
City manager, did you have something?
I just wanted to make a quick announcement. One of the speakers had made a comment about an upcoming demonstration. I was going to mention it earlier, but the mayor gave a very concise and good introductory report. I didn't want to clog things down, but just very quickly, for those in the room, there is going to be a demonstration as part of this APCD grant that the city is going for. It will be held on Tuesday, July 18th, at Serrazotti Park, 404 Park Road. It's going to start from 7:00 to 8:00 a.m. There will be a review of the tools. Landscapers are invited and encouraged to attend that. Then city crews will be testing, again, these are for battery-powered, commercial-grade landscaping tools and mowers. City crews will be testing those throughout the day, and then at 4 o'clock, again, this is Tuesday, July 18th, APCD officials will be coming to see the demonstration and see how it's working, get the feedback, and members of the council are also invited to attend that as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Will you remind us by email?
I will be happy to send this by email. Yes, you. Thank you.
Okay, Susie, you were...
Well, I would just like to make a motion to postpone...
No, there's a motion on the table.
Oh, no. Okay, my, all right.
But you're going to amend it.
Yeah, my amendment would be to postpone that motion indefinitely. It would be my amendment, but...
Well, you can make that motion.
All right, I will. I'll make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion to postpone this matter indefinitely, which in effect is killing the motion. Is there a second to that? Okay, I'll second that. So we have a motion on the floor to postpone this motion indefinitely. The effect of that would be to leave the current law in place and to continue working towards a solution. Discussion of the, your motion.
Well, I would just say that people sometimes forget that air is truly our number-one nutrient. It's more important than anything we eat. It's more important than, we can't live without clean air. We all feel the difference when we breathe clean air, so I want to say that. And the very fact that Councilmember Blatz had the idea that you could limit the use from 9 to 12, to me, is an admission that something is going on that is not in the best interest of the, of the larger community. And, I mean, that alone to me was, that was just so strange to me. I think that the, that the people that spoke tonight, I mean, we've heard these, we've heard various experts speak on this. I think enough has been said, and I would, I would just like to see this matter end. I've been going through this since, I, I helped craft the first, the regulation that I believe is still in place in 1998. I'm as sick of this as anybody that's in the audience. It just seems so logical to me to start with the, with banning the leaf, the gas-powered leaf blower. So to me, it's such a logical place to start, and then continue with the demonstrations of better technology.
Other comments?
Mr. Mayor, I, the last thing in the world we want to do is go back to our existing ordinance. That's what we have done every single time since I've been on the council. Every single time, we've gone back to the old ordinance. The old ordinance doesn't work for us. We have to do something. The people expect us to do something. We've been talking about it for six years, and every time something new comes along, we go back to the old ordinance.
They've enforced it.
Okay.
We have always gone back to the old ordinance.
Can we address the issue of why the ordinance was not enforced? So that, that was the central issue, that we didn't enforce. I wasn't on the council when all of this was going on.
Okay, through the chair.
It's my understanding that, for some reason, the council at the time chose not to enforce the ordinance that was in place, and at the last city council meeting, the majority of the council decided that the time had come, we'd had enough postponement to enforce the ordinance that's on the books.
Bill, did you, were you...
No, I was trying to understand the difference of postponing indefinitely.
Okay, well, to postpone indefinitely means basically the matter won't come back, and so it's the same thing as...
Postponing this ordinance indefinitely. This ordinance, in other words, this ordinance would not be introduced indefinitely. Okay.
Could I ask the city attorney?
Let me ask, let me ask the councilwoman. Why wouldn't you want to vote on it? Why would you want to postpone it indefinitely? Why don't you just want to have a vote on the ordinance as it is?
Well, we did last, at the last city council meeting.
No, we didn't.
No, the action is one and the same. I mean, the effect is...
Well, I was going to ask the city attorney, is there a better way for me to kill the, to, to take that motion off the table, rather than saying the language...
We can just vote on it. I mean, that is another way to do it.
Is that the right way, what I said, is that the, is there a better way to say that?
It depends on the goal of the council. If the goal is to maintain the existing ordinance, which, to be clear, the existing ordinance allows electric leaf blowers under rules and allows gas blowers in non-residential areas under regulations, but prohibits gas-powered blowers in residential areas. If your goal is to allow the existing ordinance, you have two ways to do it. One would be to vote on a motion to postpone the proposed changing indefinitely, or else simply vote on that, vote down that motion, and then by default, the current ordinance is maintained in place. If your goal is to do something different than maintaining the existing ordinance, then it would depend on your goal.
Well, my goal is to also not have gas-powered leaf blowers in commercial areas.
That would be...
That's not what you're suggesting with your motion.
Maintaining the current ordinance, pardon me, you want to prohibit gas-powered blowers in commercial areas too.
Right, I mean, that, that takes it, it takes it another step.
Right.
So the, what, you know, okay, I'll weigh in on this. I, I understand what Paul is saying, and I understand what everybody was trying to do, but there are three elements to this, this whole effort on leaf blowers, and it is air pollution, not just noise, and it is particulate matter as well, you know, in, because of allergies. So we have kind of two kinds of air pollution, and we have noise. It is, it is true that the gasoline-powered engines have made progress in being slightly cleaner, but they're still dirty, and it is true that they're quieter. I was told by one operator, you aren't going to enforce this anyway, because nobody will know I'm using a gasoline engine, because they're so quiet. And I'm saying, well, then you have nothing to be concerned about, you'll just continue doing what you're doing. But my concern is, we have a commitment from the Air Pollution Control District as a grant to move in the direction I think this whole council unanimously supports, which is 100% clean energy. We have a $60,000 grant that is going to allow us to replace all of the landscaping equipment that the city has in order to lead by example. And if we leave the ordinance, Paul, the one that we have, I understand it's not perfect, and I would agree with you, that there are things that need to be changed in it, but at least it protects people from gasoline-powered leaf blowers in residential areas and areas that are residentially developed, to give us time, and the technology continues to improve, not just for leaf blowers and not just for noise, but also for vacuums. We do have citizens who on their own have told their landscape contractors, don't bring a leaf blower on my property, bring a vacuum, and they do, and it does work. Admittedly, it's expensive, more expensive, but as a sort of a baby step, and not to put us in jeopardy of having the air pollution people as long, as well as the, I can't even think of the name of the outfit that's been lobbying the county planning department, but to have them change the threshold on air pollution in this valley, because we have lost any moral high ground, because we have repealed the law that we've had in place for 20 years, I think is not in our best interest, and I think we need sensible enforcement of the law we have right now, because even with our best efforts, we're not going to stop at all. But I wouldn't be going out trying to pick on people, but I would give the citizens who need the protection and who want the protection, the protection of a law that we have had since 1990 something or other. And so if we start there and give ourselves some time, and the technology continues to improve, Randy said it, and so did Severo at the, I think it was the last meeting, or one of our last meetings, that they recognize that the things are changing, and that the air pollution control people are saying that within two years, the transportation system of the sedan, the passenger car, is going to be producing, or contributing less to pollution than landscape equipment. So, you know, trying to come up with a compromise, it seems, it does seem kind of, you know, ironic to say the compromise is to stay with the law we have, but at least we're not going backward, and we aren't giving exceptions to school districts and to ourselves and other people who ask for them. If you recall, that great debate was, is that the tennis courts needed to have an exception, everybody needed to have an exception. What our current law doesn't require the exception, that already is built in, and we need to sort of keep closing down on this, moving in the right direction. And as I've said before, it is a similar strategy to change the culture and to encourage economically people to do a, something that's healthier, just like the anti-smoking rules, and just like a number of other things that we have done in life, seat belts, there's all sorts of things, that had huge resistance, but right now, based on what Severo said this evening, and what Randy said last time, and what we all said when we said we voted for 100% clean energy as a goal, if we can just leave it alone and not go backward, I think everybody can probably live with that, so, okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I could comment? I look at leaving it alone as going backwards. Right now, you're allowed to use the old blowers, gasoline blowers, that have tremendous emission in commercial zones, for commercial use. Why would we want to permit that? Why wouldn't we want to say, if you're going to be able to use a gas blower, if that's what we decide at all, why would we want to allow the old units? Why wouldn't we insist that it be the new unit? So at least if we're allowing gas units, they be the more modern, less, more efficient, quieter units. Though the existing law allows for the worst possible, for the worst possible result. The other thing is, is this limits time. I tend to agree with Ms. McComas, that maybe in the commercial zones, starting at 9, isn't right. Maybe we ought to lower it down to 7 o'clock. But right now, they can do it all day in the commercial zones. This at least says, let's say, 7 to 12.
Right.
And we limit, and we limit residential zones to just exactly what the existing ordinance says, which is the electric blowers. I think defeating this without certain amendments put to it takes us backwards. It leaves us exactly where we were before we even looked at all of the electric blowers, before we even tried to debate this again, and these people want some closure, so we're not going to get it again. But what are we going to do? We're going to say, oh, we can't make up our mind one more time. This is the fifth time we haven't made up our mind, and we're just going to leave it the way it is, which is the worst of both possible worlds.
Well, it seems to me that what we're doing differently is we're actually enforcing the law that's on the book as we move forward, and there's nothing that would say that we couldn't amend that law, just as you say, and have electric stuff in the residential neighborhoods, because in effect, that's what they've got right now, is electric in the residential neighborhoods. I don't understand the argument that taking and expanding the use of gasoline engines throughout the entire community as our policy, how that is going backward, or how that's an improvement over having a limited use of gasoline right now in the commercial areas, while the technology and the arguments can be advanced as to why we can eliminate those even in the commercial area. I'm not, I would be for eliminating that in the commercial areas, but it just seems to me, if we take it a step at a time, we've already received a lot of, I think, movement and positive things coming from the landscape people. Everybody's starting to recognize that it's changing, so why, why pick this time now to go the opposite direction, is all I'm saying, but...
I don't, I disagree. I don't know why you couldn't put an amendment on this, to only allow the electric, the new electric blowers in residential.
Well, if I thought I could get the votes, I would.
But then you're also going to have to get the high, the high-tech gasoline, instead of having the old two-stroke engines. I mean, why do we want to go back to something that is working for us?
Here's a compromise. We ban... We ban gas-powered leaf blowers in residential neighborhoods. And for commercial neighborhoods, they have to be the ones that you envision. Would you, would you support that motion?
I would support that motion.
Okay.
Well, Mayor, I, I-
Go ahead. You've been very patient.
Well, you know, it's just, it's, again, it's an interesting discussion. And we have beat this, we beat this blower to death how many times. But I'm, I'm hearing the, I'm hearing both arguments. And this is a person who personally feels that within the next four to five years, we're going to be so far behind this because we're going to be told by the state of California what we can and can't do. And we're just going to come back for revision, revision, revision. So when I listen to the arguments, from a personal standpoint, I argued against you in 1998 because I thought it was poorly written, and I thought, and I thought other things. I won't repeat them tonight at that time. What I'm looking at in this rendition is an opportunity to do a lot of the things that I heard the public talk about. And that's, let's train. Let's enhance the environment that these people are working in. Let's take them in a different direction, a more positive direction. Going back to the old wouldn't do that. It's not in, it's not in the ordinance. There's an opportunity here to take this and amend this in a manner that does allow for that. And we could also amend it to look at this new demonstration that's coming forward and the opportunity with this $60,000, which at one time I had wanted to do matching funds until we discussed budget a couple of weeks ago. But I just think there's an opportunity here to help the community. Aside from Mr. Shapiro's app, the only way you're going to enforce any of this is either hire more police, hire more code enforcement, or pit neighbor against neighbor. And, I'm sorry, I'm speaking. And that's all I'm trying to say is, that's my, that's my take on it right now from an enforcement mechanism. So my choice would be to create an environment where we encourage people to do the right things. And we can do it by, by doing things in this, in this text to do that. That's, that's where I would lean myself to. So I'd be willing to, again, do the same thing that we just did with ADUs, is talk about what is here, talk about what amendments that we might want to make. And then at that point, vote on this.
Okay, well, it's on the table. We can amend it if you-
Motion on the table now to indefinitely-
No, no, that, well, you're right. Okay, yeah, right. You want to withdraw that motion, so we'll just stay-
I'll withdraw that motion.
Yeah, okay, so we're just talking about yours, Paul. Okay. So what kind of amendments are we considering?
I would, I would make two for discussion purposes. I would limit, or actually, no, just two. I would limit residential to only the electric blowers, not including gas. And I would expand the restricted commercial hours of operation, changing it from 9:00 AM to 7:00 AM till noon, Monday through Friday.
What about the residential? Is that not-
I'd leave the residential the way that it is.
What were your hours for commercial?
7:00 AM to noon.
Did you not say Whispering Oaks is a commercial location earlier this evening?
I don't know what it is.
I'm sorry, I, I can't-
He asked if Whispering Oaks is a commercial application. And I, I don't know the definition of Whispering Oaks.
Can you understand, you say earlier this evening that the Whispering Oaks location-
Could you come up so that people at home could hear you, please?
Yeah.
Right, none of us said it.
That's one of the reasons for the current resident, the current-
Earlier this evening, you stated, I believe, that Whispering Oaks was a commercial location. And that means that it is not subject to the same regulations that a residential unit would be. You would allow gasoline blowers in Whispering Oaks, which is a concentrated bunch of sick people, where other people like gas stations and factories-
Okay, so your question is, is this a commercial zone, and would that be possible?
Yeah, you're going to allow Whispering Oaks to have the looser regulation rather than the residential regulation, which should be cleaner in your proposal.
Okay, we, we understand the question, and I think Paul can address that.
May I ask him a question?
Uh, sure, go ahead.
After July 1st, did the housing authorities start using electric blowers only?
They started using those before July 1st.
Just wanted to know. Okay. This, this question, that's all. Thank you, sir.
Okay, so they are using electric over there?
That's what I'm hearing.
That's what I'm seeing.
They're using electric to blow the dust through your door.
Yes.
And what hour, what hours are they doing that?
They sometimes start at 6:00 in the morning, and today they started at 8:00. So it's just whenever they feel like showing up evidently.
Okay, okay.
I honestly don't, I don't know the definition of Whispering Oaks, sir, is whether it's commercial or residential. My personal hope is it's considered residential.
Mine also. Right across the fence from my particular bungalow is the county, which is, the city has no enforcement over there whatsoever. They start at 4:00 AM. So.
Okay, thank you.
One of the, one of, I believe, one of the advantages of the existing law, even though it's got all kinds of problems, is that it says very clearly in there, I think, at least it was clear to me, that residential, regardless of what zone it is, you can't use the gasoline blower around it. So if that's part of the amendment to the, whatever you're proposing-
I'll make that amendment. How do we define that, if it has any residential component?
The current ordinance has language that we could lift for that purpose. The current ordinance prohibits gas power blowers in residential zones or within 150 feet of residences, lodgings, schools, hospitals, or residential care facilities, the latter of which would include the Whispering Oaks facility. That language could be imported into your proposed amendment.
I would support that amendment.
Okay. Okay, so we have that as an amendment? We have a second to that?
A second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any more discussion on that part of the, that motion, the amendment?
Are you voting separate?
We're going to vote on the amendment, yeah, unless, yeah, I think we should vote on the amendment. You want to call the roll?
Can I ask for a restatement of the amendment?
Okay.
All right, the first part of the amendment was that in commercial zones, they, the blowers could be used from 7:00 AM till noon. Okay? The second part of the amendment was only electric blowers can be used in residential zones.
Or near residential property.
Consistent with the language in the existing ordinance.
Are we going to take those two separate? Because I, I-
Thank you. I, I don't understand the motion.
Do we need to take them separately?
Well, the commercial, what, say that.
Okay, the hours of operation. Okay, let's, let's take the hours of operation as a separate question. First question is, is there's a, an amendment to restrict the use of gas, these new improved gasoline engines that are certified to commercial areas only, and only electric blowers when it gets anywhere near a residentially developed or a habitable-
Correct.
Uh, property. Okay, so further questions on that? If not, call the roll.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wyrick?
No.
Councilmember Blatts?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Okay, the next one was hours of operation in the commercial hours, in the commercial zone, 7:00 AM till noon.
You know, I have a lot of questions about that. For example, I lived behind the Presbyterian Church parking lot. I, I just would know, I, I would like to know how that impacts commercial, because it seems like they need to, that the commercial needs to clean their parking lots before the cars are there. I don't understand the seven, is it seven to nine because the noise carries into the neighborhoods? What is the-
Are you suggesting that it be earlier than that?
Well, this is what I don't know. But it seems like, I, I, yeah, in a way, I'm suggesting that.
Well, the reason that I had nine originally was because of the noise.
Okay.
And if they were adjacent to residential.
Yes.
However, I'm convinced after the photographs that Ms. McComas showed, that maybe that's not realistic for parking lots.
Uh huh.
So I'm suggesting that it be changed from nine to seven.
Wait a minute. Seven to nine, you mean?
No, 9:00 AM, I'm suggesting it be changed to 7:00 AM.
Okay, I understand. But I didn't, I didn't understand why it should go on till noon.
Uh, that's limiting it almost half the time as it is now.
Yeah, and if they, and that allows them, I mean, if they can't, they wouldn't do it anyway. Yeah, I just don't know if that's the right decision.
How would you suggest changing that?
Well, what are, can, what are the current, what are the current hours again?
8:00 AM to 6:00 PM.
Right.
Okay, so seven to noon, eight to 6:00 PM. Can you address, could, could she address that so I could better understand? Like, are parking, is that, what are the, what are, so those are the hours that are allowed? But what are the actual hours, is my question?
There are employees that come to work about 7:30. And you'll have employee cars in the parking lot till 5:00. And rarely do we hear a blower in our parking lot until about 4:00 o'clock, when there are some people that do blow. I heard one yesterday, which is rare. So usually it's in the mornings.
So do you think that that's a hard, that they could, the seven to noon would work?
I don't know how, I mean, I'm not a business owner of the commercial person, but, I mean, they need time in the morning, for sure.
Okay, so the purpose is to restrict noise for the people that live in the vicinity?
The purpose of starting at seven rather than 4:00 in the morning is to restrict noise.
Yes.
The purpose of limiting it till noon is to allow people to know that there's not going to be any leaf blowers in town afternoon, so they can open their windows and put their laundry out.
Okay. All right.
Not only is the hour getting late, but this is becoming somewhat convoluted. And I, I mean, I understand what we're trying to do. But I guess I'm drifting back towards the original position. If we were, we leave what is on the books and enforce it right now, not because that's great. And everybody in the audience, as well as up here, would like to see that improved on. But to try tonight to, to go through and to pick, I'm not sure that I, I would even know what we were voting on when we get to the end of it.
Well, couldn't we simplify it and, and just have reasonable hours so that we, you know, we don't have to worry? Seven, you know, seven to six, you know? If we're going, I mean, we, we are voting on what we, on the original ordinance, but with the improvement-
No, we're not. We are voting on Paul's-
No, no, but, 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 but he's, he's, he's no longer allowing, Paul has come to the, has, you know, he's-
We're, we're trying to modify it, and, and we're making a, a good effort, but it's getting very-
The only, the only, the only part, I think it's an improvement on what we have. I do feel it's an improvement on what we have, but I'm just not sure about the hours. It's clear to me that they shouldn't start before 7:00. That's clear to me, and they shouldn't go into the night. So if, if, you know, I'd be fine with, to me, that's improvement. Seven to 12 is an improvement. So. The whole thing seems like an improvement to me.
Yeah. I guess I'm not prepared tonight to make that kind of a judgment. I'd have to see, we'd have to, I know nobody wants to see this come back. But it doesn't have to come back. That would be the purpose of postponing indefinitely. But if we want to amend what we currently have, or sit down and try and figure out how we can combine the two. But I, I-
John, Mayor Johnny, we are banning gas-powered leaf blowers in residential neighborhoods.
And we have that right today.
But we're, with the addition of only having good technology in commercial zones. That's the difference. We can no longer, we are no longer allowing polluting gas-powered leaf blowers in commercial zones. It's as simple as that.
Well, and that's why I was willing to support that amendment. But what concerns me is there are a lot of other things in here that I have not had a chance to study. And so it just, I'm-
That's all, is that, that's, is that the gist of it?
That was, that was the extent of my amendments.
Okay, was there anything else?
No, I just, I feel it's important to have the training, the certification, and all that, and that's already in here.
Yeah, okay. How do you, okay, so are we ready to move on?
And I, and I believe that the, that what we have in there is an additional burden on the city staff that they probably cannot comply with, with their best effort. It just isn't practical. It's a nice idea, it's just, I don't know that that's a, I don't see that as an improvement. I see that as a, also as a step backwards, but.
In this case, I have to agree with the mayor. I think that before we, we have something on the books now that's fairly simple and easy to understand and enforce. We haven't really tried it. To get into the whole certification, licensing, testing, requires more thought than I think we can do tonight with the language. So I'm, when I'm going to, you know, that's, that's why I have a problem with it. I agree with the mayor in that, in that respect.
Okay.
We don't always agree, we agree on this one.
All right.
Also, we have a motion, we have a second.
Yeah, we do have a-
We have an amendment. Are we going to vote on it?
Yeah, we voted on the amendment, so it's amended into the main motion. So I guess if there's no further discussion, we can call the roll.
On the amendment?
No, on the motion.
On the motion.
Because the amendment's already passed on a four to one.
And the motion is, again, to-
Accept the motion as presented with the amendment that commercial hours of operation will be from 7:00 AM till noon.
Okay.
And that in commercial zones, the gas blowers have to be the higher tech, lower polluting, lower noise level.
And the indefinite postponing that motion died. That was withdrawn.
That was withdrawn.
Got it.
And the further, if I could jump in, element, as I understand it, would be to adjust the ordinance that's in the packet to delete the allowance for leaf blowers in residential zones and replace it with the prohibition on resident, leaf blower, gas-powered, gas-powered leaf blowers in residential zones and within 150 feet of residences, as stated before. One note on that, that's a, that's a change from what's on the dais. So we'd have to come back in two further trips to the council. One to introduce and two to adopt.
Great.
I think it's an important amendment.
I didn't quite catch what you said there at the end, Matt.
In other words, your vote tonight would be to direct staff to return with a ordinance matching that for introduction, not to introduce, which is, which is okay. Just, we'll come back next time.
Okay, any other discussion? If not, call the roll.
Mayor Protem Wyrick?
No.
Mayor Johnston?
No.
Councilmember Blatts?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
No.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Okay. So we are with what we have on the books, and we need to-
Right back to where we started five years ago, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, well, okay. I will seriously pursue the, what you, what you've said here this evening regarding the, a higher standard for commercial operations and come back with that. But for now, anyway, we have not repealed the prohibition on gasoline within the residential areas. And we haven't changed the hours of operation. But we've heard a lot of input that we should, we should consider before we take another shot at this, so, okay.
Move to continue, item four?
I don't know.
We, we excuse the consultant.
Right, so I'm just-
Thank you.
I'm supporting your decision.
Just letting you know.
Happening, what's happening? What's happening? We're skipping item four?
The mistress, what?
We're skipping four?
We are, yeah, we are not dealing with, with four to nine. In fact, we're pulling it from the agenda until further notice.
We got two minutes to take something else up.
Okay, so what's-
We have four items to pick from.
So you got, you got, oh, yeah.
I don't think seven is important.
Should we take up number eight?
Seven can wait. The designation, yeah.
Okay.
Number eight.
We could take that up at July or an August meeting.
Well, I think eight is going to take as long as assignments to the building appeals board. In fact, actually, I think the assignment to building appeals board would be faster. Eight's going to be a long conversation.
Agreed.
Okay, well, if you say so.
We got, what, 30 seconds?
Okay, let's, what is it, we want, you think the appeals board, basically, it's in the code. I'm not quite sure what we're doing here. Okay, let's, uh, what is it, we wanna, you think the appeals board, basically, it's in the code, I'm not quite sure what we're doing here.
We just wanna address a couple of the issues.
Are we on number eight?
No, we're on number six, assignment of the Building Appeals Board.
Five. Number five, to correct you, sorry. Building Appeals Board assignments, it's number five.
I'm dyslexic, I, I skipped the, okay. I stand corrected, thank you, Steve. Okay, it says to receive a report on the activities of Building Appeals and to confirm current assignments to the Building Appeals Board, so I, uh-
Their staff report. Not much to add to that, again, about this bag, it was requested by members of the council. We do have some assignments that the staff is working on with the Building Appeals Board, and as I understand, this matter was to get some clarity on, uh, on perhaps some additional assignments, and the current assignments that have been given to the Building Appeals Board, uh, by the city council. Just as a quick recap, the, uh, the board meets when it is called by the building official, or when a, or when an appeal has been filed, and of course, the council may also give direction, uh, to the board to take up certain matters, uh, on the behalf of the council, and then to return to council with its recommendations. That is the staff report. Mayor Johnston?
Bill?
I have, uh, prepared a list of council-assigned tasks as of seven eleven for the council to consider, uh, that I'd like to pass out. With, which, uh, one for the clerk, which reflect my understanding, going through extensive emails in history, of the current, um, undone work, or work that needs to be done, that has come up in the past.
Okay, so you're saying these are things that the city council directed the appeals board to deal with, or?
Yeah, the past, yes.
Past and had been completed.
And I'm, and what I'm suggesting is that tonight's a good cha- a good chance to reaffirm the list, um, which I'd be happy to explain if necessary, but, um, it's a fairly specific list, uh, and reflects the history and the past protocol. And, uh, you know, I think it's, I don't wanna waste time reading it since I've passed it out. But I would submit that as a list to, uh, um, assign as of this date, and, um, I, I, I guess that should be, um, in the form of a motion, then.
Wait, you, what, to adopt this list?
Adopt this list as the current assignments to the Building Appeals Board.
Yeah, is there a motion to that effect?
Is that appropriate to make that a motion?
Oh, yeah, if you, if you wanna-
That's a valid motion.
Okay, is there a second to that?
Second.
Okay, it's moved in a second, so let's go through and discuss them, you know?
Yes.
This, this is in effect, this supersedes all prior discussions or emails or whatever, right?
Trying to clean it up.
Okay, so, number one, tell us about that.
Recommendations for code amendments enhancing fire safety and other concerns. We have a fire safety component to our code, there's been a number of proposals along the, the years of things like, of, of going beyond state code for certain fire risks, like having, like not allowing plastic, um, uh, skylights, uh, you know, having fire-resistant roof coverings. And, um, there's been specific proposals made, uh, but the, unfortunately, we haven't seen specific code amendments coming back to the council as recommendations from the Building Appeals Board in terms of the, that section of Title IX. And also, we, uh, there's a, there is another aspect of they're referring to the CAL FIRE map, there's been some issues of reviewing the accuracy of the CAL FIRE map and making sure that our classifications according to CAL FIRE make sense, and then that our specific extra considerations for fire safety in the code are consistent with those categories. And I think that's an appropriate thing for the Building Appeals Board to take up and make recommendations back to us about.
Okay, and then we had one that came before us and got sent back because the, this group, uh, the Appeals Board recommended, again, something that the fire district did-
That was a separate issue?
Right, that is coming back.
That is a separate issue from the, uh, the Ventura County Fire District's recommendations for, um, some other types of issues, uh, separate from what these are specifically. In fact, there, it doesn't actually overlap, uh, Mayor, there's some recommendations that they've made, especially with respect to sprinklers, that the Building Appeals Board did not endorse or recommend that we adopt, but then there's other things that are not in their recommendations that the B A B, um, has recommended. So, those are really separate issues, and what, uh, where, where that comes in was number four, review and make recommendations for, to council.
Okay, well, as you say, so, so the first one is, uh, flammable materials that go beyond the state prohibitions.
Exactly, uh, and building code issues like closing in eaves with small screens, so embers don't get blown up into attics, uh, the, the standards for the roofing, things like, um, uh, acrylic, uh, skylights instead of glass, that kind of thing.
Those seem to be things that the fire departa- fire district would tell, recommend to us, is there a reason not to just use the fire on that?
Well, again, I, I, I would prefer that anything coming either from the fire district, any, any changes to our code, I would like to see reviewed by the B A B.
Here's, here's a prime example, um, the fire department is supposed to provide an updated CAL FIRE map, and they haven't done that in five years.
Okay.
So, that's, so as much as I agree with you, we'd like them to be able to do that, the reality is having someone from our community, um, one of our boards or commissions actually looking into-
Okay, so you can say that one, can push it along, and when it comes before us, we'll ask the fire district anyways for concurrence, right?
Yes.
So, okay.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so now, number two is one.
Just a quick note, and I think that's completely consistent with the, with the, with the one, with one of the things that the Building Appeals Board is working on right now, which is good, working through the building code amendments, bringing that forward, so, that makes sense.
Number two is just, you know, they, any recommendations they have for promoting this non-conforming program to get the numbers up, which helps us with our Reno.
I am, but, I guess my reaction to that would be is that, uh, it's sort of expanding the, the function of the board into more of what the planning commission, uh-
Well, the, the reason that that is actually not completely accurate, Mayor, is that a number of the issues, um, are, have to do with, um, how the building officials process these particular applications.
Okay, how they interpret the code and apply it, okay.
And, uh, anyway, I-
I think in the, in the, Mayor, in the past, I think the, the past differences is Title IX versus Title X.
Mm-hmm.
And we've had some, um, and we've had planning looking at Ti- at Title IX issues in, in the past, and it's just, it just wasn't appropriate.
Okay, uh, number three?
Already mentioned that.
Review recommended city CAL FIRE, okay, uh, number four?
Uh, that's just if you, if you have, I just think that rec- if, if you have another agency making, uh, uh, recommendations to council, or, or the building official wanting to amend Title IX, that, that, the, the B A B is there, um, at least, uh, I think, uh, the protocol's appropriate to, uh, for the council to ask them to, to look at those issues and make recommendations to us. We don't have to accept them, but I think they should review and make recommendations as an aid to governing.
I have a question of the council, do the members of the public know that we're not gonna address item eight?
It's past ten thirty.
But have we, have you, have you informed them?
Uh, no, we, uh, we did not do that, I'm, you know, there, there is a provision in the, in the policy that things we don't reach on the agenda by ten thirty that we can't take up, and, uh, that one was three items farther down, I apologize to you for that.
Do they come up at the beginning of the next meeting, Matt?
Uh-
They should.
Should, but they don't always.
We tried, we tried to put it at the beginning.
Well, I guess we can make that as a commitment.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll put it number one on the agenda for the next-
Stay tuned.
Yeah, okay, thank you, right.
Sorry, yeah.
Can I answer your question? I have six.
Microphone.
What I left my family to kind of speak about.
Six?
And numerous times it's down the agenda, and just wasn't taken care of, so, again, another night spent with you wonderful folks.
Yeah, this is, but this is what I tried to avoid at the beginning, and I think Mayor Johnson and I both tried to avoid this at the beginning of the meeting, if we can't get to something, we've got to, uh, let the public know sooner, this, this can't go on, this can't go on.
Well, the reality is you can't predict the discussion, so it's not necessarily fair to say, we have ten things on our agenda, we'll get to five, the other five you leave, you leave, we the five clear up, and now you're not here, so how would you feel about that?
Yeah, okay, we don't, yeah, I understand the frustration out there, and I apologize for it, uh, yes.
It goes both ways for a lot of-
Right, we-
We're sorry, Brian.
If I could, hold, hold on, if I could ask for a point of order?
Yeah, Paul.
If, if we have an agendized item, and we haven't been able to get to it, and there's public speakers here, are we allowed to hear what they have to say?
The present code that imposes the ten thirty rule does not have an exception. In other, you're not asking for the council to discuss the item, you're asking it to take comment, yes, the members of the public could comment on the item under general public comment, not on the item, that would be allowable if the council chose to reopen general public comment, that would be a viable approach.
I would, yeah, I would, okay.
Suspending.
Okay.
No, we're suspending so you can talk.
No, we're suspending our discussion.
Yeah, we don't wanna keep you, have, have you have to wait any longer, we're-
For me, I can wait, but, so.
I want you to be able to go home to your family.
Be suspended and-
Yeah, yeah.
We're gonna let anyone talk that wants to?
What, I, I think we've done, we've, yeah, we gotta-
That's a good idea, that's a good, when people wait four hours, it's at least-
We're gonna let you talk.
Yeah.
Thank you, by the way, I'm, this is important enough for me that I've sat through, uh, additional unit housing, or auxiliary, or whatever it is, ADUs, and, and I know more about leaf blowers because I've sat through this for
How many years now?
Before. Um, so, item six wa- is talking about a composition of commissions, this has come before, uh, this council, any number of times, it has had this happen to, to not be the top priority and be postponed for some uncertain date in the future. It's also been brought before the commission several times, several times we've discussed it, uh, and we've voted unanimously, uh, so the question is the number of people on the commission, whether it should be five, whether it should be seven, uh, also whether there should be a, a composition of people that are residents versus non-residents. I am an Oakview resident, I've been in my house for thirty-six years, this secret little part of Oakview, long-term neighborhood. My wife's family, uh, her dad was born in Filmor in nineteen twenty-five, they moved to Miners Oaks in the late twenties, so we have some history. I, as a non-member, am the vice chair on the Historic Preservation Commission, our chair on the Historic Preservation Commission, uh, Chair McCready is also a non-resident, we're the two non-residents on the Historic Preservation Commission. Uh, I attend, as many of you know, I attend school meetings, I attend meetings called by two of the council people, and a variety of meetings, I'm also on the treasurer on the, on the board, uh, on the museum board, that's because this valley's important to me. I've done things that, for my kids, I was in, my daughter, I was in theater, for my son, I was, uh, Little League president on the, for five and a half years on the board for tent, um, and I still am prior baseball, I love the kids. But for me, local history is what counts, and me, the local, is the Ojai Valley. So, um, I go and attend all the different meetings because it's important to me, because I'm a resident of the Ojai Valley, not necess- not because of, you know, the citizenry that, that comes with that. So, you know, that's what I just wanted to share, was that, uh, you know, I look at, I, I talked to my good friend David Mason, who hopefully is long asleep by now, David, um, and, you know, without people who are outside, you wouldn't have, David Mason at one time lived in the East End, you wouldn't have a David Mason. Patricia Clark Dorner, who was on this for decades, finally had to give it up because of the, the health of her husband, you wouldn't have Patricia Clark Dorner. Craig Walker, again, lives outside the community of Ojai, uh, these are just recent people that I know that, uh, contribute to this, to this valley and to this commission, so, thank you for interrupting, I'm sorry to interrupt this, you're trying to get it done, so, but, and I appreciate-
How about the number?
The number, um, I think seven works, again, we brought that up on seven, currently, we have six, we've had a vacancy for, uh, quite a few months. We have had, uh, a woman and her daughter who have attended the last two meetings, uh, we asked her why, people asked me that too, when I was the only one in the audience. Uh, she is a, appears to be very qualified on historical, local history, um, just hasn't heard anything on getting a, on being interviewed for a replacement, so we're not, we ask at the meetings why we don't have seven. I think the, the four and the, uh, having the seven people gives you a quite, a, a breadth of people that are providing information, um, and, you know, if you look at the people that are involved in ours, they do have that breadth of experience, uh, that comes, I, I'm not sure which, which part of that breadth you would eliminate. Uh, again, my breadth is that this is what I love to do, I'm on the, on this commission, I'm on the board, not because of my daughter did theater, or my son did athletes, but because I love local history, and this is where my kids grew up. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Okay, uh, and you folks who have very patiently waited, you're welcome to-
Part of the broader discussion.
Okay, do you want to bring it back, okay?
We wanted to see where everybody was at on those issues anyways, so, we're happy to come back.
Okay, well, thank you, and we apologize, Steve?
If, if everyone's just coming back, I'll wait till it comes back.
Not tonight.
Not tonight.
Oh, yeah, yeah, he said, oh, yeah, yeah, we'll be coming back. And-
Kimberly?
She's waiting for the discussion.
She's watching.
I'm watching.
Oh, yeah, just, yeah, okay. Okay, so we were in the middle, and we'll go back to the agenda, and we were going down the list, and we were on item four, is that right?
The rationale for that is that if it's coming from an outside agency, the council could use some, always use some assistance in terms of reviewing that proposal before it gets to us.
Is this like state updates type of thing?
Yeah, or, or the fire department.
Mr. Mayor?
And the, huh?
One clarification, do you understand this item four to include the review and analysis of the annual up, uh, triennial updates to the building code and the fire code?
Yes, yes, because there might be implications for what we should be changing in our code, or going beyond the state code.
Thus continuing their existing work on that.
Actually, this is one of the prime examples of why the BAB should exist, is that the building official has someone to actually take this to and discuss, and discuss it publicly.
Right.
Yeah, I would agree, and that's completely consistent with previous direction and, and current work with the Building Appeals Board, so, yeah.
My understanding is part of the tension that exists is the, uh, the role of who initiates, uh, what goes to the B A B, and it does the city council, right, that's why we're doing this this evening, correct?
Right, that's why we're doing it, because I think that, and I, actually, I, I will be proposing a text amendment to clarify just that, you know, when it's appropriate to do so, but right now, just focusing on the council-directed assignment.
Yeah, well, that is in the code though, right, and, I mean, I, I understood that the council had that right to do, but not, but the, the board does not tell the council what they wanna work on.
No.
They can suggest things, but they're-
Right.
Well, we wanna discuss that a little bit too, clear, and clarify that too.
Okay.
And then number five is, is just, uh, there's more programs, uh, for example, one exact, one perfect example is the vacant building ordinance, uh, there's other things in Title IX, in other words, other than just, uh, fire safety and building codes. And I, I specify one time, not continuing, one-time review and report, and then also, uh, we always, there are, Title IX in particular is full of contradictions, missing cross-references, and other issues requiring code text amendments, and I, I would like to have the, them make recommendations for, for fixing these things. That's my list, that's my motion for this list.
What do you, we got six, though, is that?
Six items.
See, at five, what was your last one, Bill?
This, uh, number six was the, uh-
Oh, the contradictions, what you just described.
The one-time review and report to council on contradictions, missing cross-references, and other issues requiring code text amendments in service to clarity and integrity of Title IX and the municipal code.
Could we back, go back, if I may?
Yeah.
To point number five, the one-time review and report to council on city performance for all city programs listed in Title IX and the municipal code, could you give me a little more definition of what that city performance means? I'm trying to understand what, what the, what the role would be of the board at that point.
Well, and, and again, I'm open to suggestions, but the thought that in, behind the writing of that was
Right.
like, for example, the, the vacant building ordinance, which we've had all kinds of trouble with in terms of implementing, and, uh, whether or not, uh, they, there's some suggestions for how, um, how that, how the program incorporated in the vacant building ordinance is actually operating, um, and, you know, whether there's some suggestions of how to make it operate better if it's not operating better, or if it's operating dysfunctionally, how it should operate, how it should be changed.
Yeah, me, I, I, Steve, I, I, maybe, let me interject, 'cause I think when I see the word performance, you might think that someone's, they're gonna be able to subject you to a performance review, and that is, that is not the goal here.
You have a better word, I'll, I'll be, I'll open up-
The goal is to look at the actions and say, what, can we, you know, if, if something was done poorly, let's, let's take a look-
So maybe progress, or efficacy, or something like that? Okay.
How about we change performance to efficacy, I like that.
Right.
Has a lot of syllables.
You know, again, a prime example of that is the-
It'd be great on Words With Friends.
It'd be great on Words With Friends.
The weed abatement program that we have right now and the dysfunction of the two entities that are in charge of it, and we've just had a lot of discussions with how we're gonna clarify that role between fire marshals and city officials.
That discussion's already led to improvements.
Yes.
The Miller property is down.
Yeah. So, those are some of the things that I think they could look at and say, how could we improve those interactions between this agency and that agency?
I'll accept substituting efficacy for performance.
I do have concerns when we have too much sort of committee oversight rather than holding our paid administrator accountable for doing what administrators are supposed to do, which is to execute what this body does. To have someone on top of that, almost monitoring the behavior of the staff and the behavior sort of of the council, seems to me that it opens up things to a much more complex issue. Everything is not going to be... We're talking about code enforcement, which is something near and dear to my heart, but I've also observed that we've had some real Donny Brooks over, you know, kind of strict enforcement of something that has been going on for 50 or 100 years in this valley and that we can't effectively change, but people keep pointing it out that, you know...
Certainly, board and commissions cannot direct staff or anything like that. No implication of that at all.
So...
And I'd be happy to delete five if it gets a consensus on the rest of them.
Okay. You're a good bargainer. Okay.
So, I'll accept the amendment to delete number five.
Well, here's also something else, too. If we accept this as is, as council, we have the right to come back and actually remove that as needed. We have...
We can always change it, put it back there.
That's right.
So, I'll accept the amendment. We delete five, and motion stands for the other remainder numbers.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Well, I'd like to just discuss this, the issue of BAB meetings.
Can we get this motion done?
Yes, we can.
Then we can discuss that.
But he asked for...
Separate, no?
This one?
Yeah, I didn't know if that was on this. Okay.
No.
This motion, okay. We've got to move seconded. If there's no further discussion, call the roll. This is items one through four and six will stay. Item five will be dropped off, and we can revisit it at any time, right? Okay.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wyrick?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatts?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Okay. Randy, you had something?
So, I just wanted to create an environment here while we're talking tonight about past BAB interactions, which haven't been great. And I'm not gonna blame anyone for it. They just haven't been conducive to quality interactions with city staff, and I think personally, sometimes not getting quality work out of BAB. So, I think one of the things... One of the issues that's always a stickler with them is who calls the meeting? And if we need a meeting and we ask for one and we don't get it, then we get caught up in a blame game. So, what I'd like to do is put BAB actually on a... With the amount of work that we've given them right now, but I'd like to see us put BAB on a regular meeting time, and if not, once, twice a week or twice a month. And I'm looking at the... We're the second Tuesday, maybe putting them on the first and the third Tuesday of the month, or one of those if we want to do one meeting. But, actually, schedule it and schedule it, because like any other commission, these are citizens, and schedule it to six o'clock to... Or starting time at six, and working its way through either a timeframe at no later than 10 or no later than nine. But, it's gotta be a set timeframe and a set opportunity for this group, and I believe for the building appeals or the building official to actually put on their calendar when they're gonna be there. That's just one of the current concerns that's been brought to my attention.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Paul.
Councilman Haney, my impression of the BAB is that they work on issue-specific things.
Right.
Unlike the planning commission that has projects coming before them on a regular basis all the time. Why wouldn't it be that there's not gonna be anything for the BAB to talk about on a regular basis?
Well, I think... Well, I think that that has been the past thoughts, when the reality is, if you talk to the BAB people, I mean, Mr. Quillessy could talk to that, but they feel like they're not giving it enough time to do the work that they've been asked to do. And we have five tasks that are specifically assigned to them right now. So, I would agree with you. At the end of these five tasks, if there's no reason to conduct a meeting, then to allow the city manager and the building official to say, "We don't need a meeting."
I agree.
But, I guess I'm... I... We're not limiting committees, you know, subcommittees of the BAB, but how much of these... How much of these five things that we have here actually require, you know, public hearings time and time and after time? That's my only concern.
No, I agree with you, Paul. I have great concern of how mission creep, how it gets bigger, and then we have the staff has to support this.
Well, I'd like to comment on that.
Okay. Go ahead.
First of all, to set... To do subcommittee assignments, you have to have a meeting. You have to have a meeting to do anything.
Well, to take action, you do.
And, well, a subcommittee is action.
But, a subcommittee... Two of them can get together and come back with a report and then just...
But, the way... But, the way it's supposed to work is you have a meeting and you assign that task, and the majority agrees to that subcommittee. That's Robert's rules. And one of the problems, I just want to point out, is that the... What I would say is that when there's a task assigned by council, that it would be appropriate for a protocol to, say, meet once a month until that task is done. I mean, that doesn't mean you're there forever, but until it's done. When it's done, it's done. But, again, one of the issues, too, is that, for example, the building official at one point announced to the building appeals board that it weren't gonna have meetings after five o'clock. Well, that doesn't go over well with people who are volunteering their time. Now, is that good for public access?
Yeah, but why is the building official making that decision as opposed to the city manager?
Well, I'm saying...
Or you have the council.
I'm quoting an email from the building official.
And that situation has been rectified.
So, getting it... Go ahead, Susan.
Are they currently meeting? When they do meet, is it the same time?
I don't even know if they have a regular schedule at this point.
Yeah, that's what my question is, is this...
I think Randy's point is that when we have an assignment that doesn't go on forever, I completely agree. But, when we... There's a specific assignment, they should not self-assign, that meeting once a month until the assignment's complete makes sense.
I would agree with that.
Can we let them pick out their time?
A month.
Rather than us imposing a time?
Well, this is where I'm trying to go with this, is I think that as the liaison and having a chair and having the city manager and the building official all sit down and actually make some agreements as to and set a calendar, that's probably a better way, Paul, is to actually look at the assignments.
Yeah.
Set a calendar, set some specific times, and as the liaison, I'd be more than happy to sit in at that meeting and be part of it. Or, we can, again, let the city manager do his role and bring the chair and the building official in, and let all three of them agree as to what that calendar is and set meeting dates. But, right now, there's not that sense of unity. We got... We're pulling in different directions, and that's what you've heard. And that's what I've heard. And what my goal is as the liaison for this quarter is to remove that and to create a better understanding of each role, each other's roles, responsibilities, and how we can work together to be productive versus having a board that just isn't.
Well, you could always say they could meet on the first and third Tuesday of every month as needed. I mean, you could do that, but...
But, when you set that up, they become public meetings, and then the public meetings have to have staff that follow all the Brown Act stuff, and then you end up with a, you know, everything done by committee. It just seems to me this is a highly technical area that your fire chief, your building official, and your city manager should, in most communities, they handle this. It's fine to have a citizen group that acts as a judicial body on an appeal. That's what I thought it was set up to do. But, it just seems to me we're going in the direction of creating more and more bureaucracy and red tape, and, you know, then you have to staff it, and...
Well, the building officials' contract specifically specifies that some of their responsibility is liaison to the building appeals board. That's in their contract.
Right. But, it's a question of who is determining what, you know, who's in charge or directing it, and it seems, you know... You know, I have this... I have a theory that if there is such a group as the paperclip makers of America, if you formed that group, they would become then the center of the universe for all policy matters and every organization ever belonged to. If they have a tendency to do that, and this body has to kind of...
Yeah, we're the ones in charge.
Right. But, we gotta put some parameters on it. This seems like a fairly broad and wide area of things that normally are done at a staff level, and if we do it with meetings twice a month, and then you...
Well, I didn't say twice.
No, I know. But, you know, I mean, Paul was suggesting it, and I don't disagree that if you got a lot to do, sometimes you meet twice a month in order to get it done.
So, Mayor, I'm not necessarily disagreeing with you. What I'm trying to say is, I can just bring up two immediate concerns that the BAB has brought forward, and without having the ability to direct a conversation, all they've been able to do is contact a council person. One, again, is the weed abatement and the fact that we had some serious concerns about who was accountable for what and who did what. And the other thing is just real simple, this fire map. The fact... And the fire marshal actually agreed to us that they were... That they should have provided this. So, here's, again, here's a board that actually is looking at these issues, has concerns regarding our community, and had did the right thing, and actually had some very productive discussions with the fire marshals and the fire chiefs of the area.
Let me ask, if we didn't have a building appeals board, who would be doing that?
The city manager and the city council.
There'd be no citizen oversight.
Well, but I'm not sure what the oversight is. I mean, citizens come here and oversee, see everything during public comments.
Well, you could say the same thing about the planning commission.
Well, that's true, but the planning commission has a much broader responsibility, and they're supposed to be originating things as opposed to...
No?
Reviewing. Yes.
They actually... That's very limited in terms of originating. I mean, they have originating, some originating thing, but if you know, most of their work is simply looking at staff reports.
Right. But, it usually starts with a citizen coming to apply for something at City Hall, and the staff then taking that and then putting it through the process of the planning commission. And they then advise the council. You know, are we really creating, you know, does... I thought that the appeals board was an ad hoc group that was there in case there was a dispute by a citizen who didn't like the decision made by the building official and the city manager.
It's actually the state law is quite more broad than that. I want to read the two sentences that I'm suggesting we add to the... Our text amendment, because it reflects what's in state code and in the health and safety. "The board acting as locals' appeal board shall hear appeals relating to building requirements for new building construction. The board asks... Acting as a housing appeal board shall hear appeals relating to use, maintenance, and change of occupancy for existing hotels, motel, lodging houses, apartment houses, and dwellings, and portions thereof, and buildings and structures accessory thereto, including requirements governing alteration, additions, repair, demolition, and moving." In other words, it's both things, and it makes sense that if you are... The code specifically, in most cities, has this policy oversight aspect, because it, acting as the appeal board, you want them to review changes that are occurring in the building code since they're the appealing agency. And, you know, I just think...
Reviewing the code, I understand that.
Yes.
Yeah.
And that's a lot of what this is, is reviewing the current code, Title IX.
Yeah. Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Upon our request, not on their own.
The mayor, the mayor Protem, has been chairman of this board. Mr. Quillessy, who's in the audience, has been on the board. I would like to get more of a, you know, take from the mayor Protem as to how he saw this board as the chair, and Mr. Quillessy, how he saw the board as a member, rather than just, you know, reading the...
Well, I'll give you a good example of what I think the BAB did very well. When the compliance program was initially adopted, it included language that required Title 24 current code compliance, which basically rendered the entire program ineffectual, because you were taking about older buildings, having to come up to current code compliance in the language that was in the code. There were a number of things that were adopted by staff that weren't reviewed from a user-friendly, goal-compliant point of view, and the BAB did a lot of work to come up with proposals to modify the compliance program that resulted in the numbers going up. And that was done by the BAB.
The numbers? I don't understand what the numbers going up...
The numbers of terms of compliance units being permitted. There was almost no activity in the program because of the way that the staff had proposed and sent it to council and was approved by the council years and years ago. There was almost zero activity in the compliance program until the compliance program was reviewed by people looking at it from a standpoint of what's a responsible way of serving the goals here. We had a disconnect between goals and design in the building, in the compliance program. That was fixed by a lot of work by the building appeals board and resulted in our getting arena numbers up from the compliance program. And that was an assignment from the council to say, "Look, this program isn't working as was recommended by staff. Can you work with staff to fix it?" And it got done. And that's, I think, one specific example of how this board contributed to the goals as set by council when the initial adopted system was not serving those goals.
Okay. Well, I guess my concern about streamlining our little government is to hold the staff accountable through this body, and what you're saying is maybe that that's beyond the council.
It took a lot of time.
Yeah.
And we assigned the BAB that...
So, they specialize and focus on...
Can you look at this, please, and see what you can do to make it work?
Okay.
And that group did that work.
Okay. Understand.
That's... I'm trying to answer your question. But, I fully agree. It's not a self-assignment. No. It's not a self-assignment body. I completely agree.
Okay.[1643.02] Okay, so reading between the lines, or maybe just straight out, Randy, you say there's some tension over when these meetings get called because the staff didn't, didn't call them.
That's why, that's why, again, I think everyone who's involved here are good people. We just need to set some parameters as to how this group can function in a more functional manner. So again, let's set a date, let's set a time, let's set a calendar, let that come back to us, and, and then at that point in time, we also have a date certain as to when this will be done. They can come back and say, "We got, we took care of three, we need two more to do. What would you like us to do?" And we can actually see their work and see if it is something positive. That's all I'm trying to say.
Okay, well, here's the way, here's where I come from. Legislative bodies, policy groups come up with the what, and professional administrators are supposed to give you the how and get it done. So if we took this list and said, "Recommendation for code amendments enhancing fire safety and other concerns, such and such," and we say to the city manager, "We want this done, and we want it done by a certain date," and then not try to manage what their calendar is or what it is, just put that down on our calendar and, and demand a report. And if our staff is not, not functioning properly, maybe we need a different staff. But turning it over to a committee may work, depending on who's on the committee and how interested.
Yeah, it may not work, but what, I, I can stand that the way, the way we work with a small staff is that our commissions and this board act as another resource for staff and for council.
Okay, but have you been following some of the chain of email that I, at least I've been seeing?
I'm trying to divorce my comments from individual personalities.
Oh, okay, well, yeah. So my feeling is, we ask a question, someone should give us an answer. Okay, fine. If this, you think this is going to help improve it, let's move on with it and then come back and revisit it if the improvement's not there.
And I have no problem setting date certens for reports, and if they're not forthcoming, then, you know, that's that.
Okay, well...
I, I think what would help me is if we had a very succinct list of the assignments that we've given to the Appeals Board, and the anticipated, what we're looking for out of those assignments, and then when we're going to get something back based on those assignments.
Well, we asked them for that.
I think, I think that would be very helpful because these are very broad, generalized kinds of things. For instance, I don't see where it says, there's a, you're to recommend the code amendment over the fire map for the, for the area of town between Grand and Pleasant. Okay? I mean, that's the kind of thing, or maybe it needs to be more broad than that. But I'm just saying, these are, I don't, I don't know what they're working on here, to tell you the truth. I know what, I know what, this is a, a, an area which we are giving them to be responsible for, but I don't know right now what they are doing with regard to recommendation or number one, or number two, or number three, or number six.
Why don't we ask them for a plan of work and dates for completion?
Okay, well, right now, pardon me, Bill, Steve, let's just, for example, number one, the fire map, this seems to be something that I've heard from members of the, of the board and, and the council. What, what has been done on that? That was a request of the B A B? Is that correct? They were supposed to be doing that, and the staff was supposed to be supporting them and getting that done?
It was raised as an issue by the Building Appeals Board, but I don't believe that there was any direction from council to dig into the fire map issue.
Are...
And so we, staff didn't have direction.
Okay, so, so now with what is, was just done?
Right.
We could go from this point forward, and you and your staff would then work with them and get back to...
Yes, sir.
Because, you know, when we had that thing on the sprinkler system for garages or for 10,000, well, I can't remember what the, 1,000 square feet or whatever it was, and the, the B A B, on a four-to-one vote or something, had what, had, had recommended against what the fire district had supported. And so when it came before us, the only question I asked was, if they, if the B A B voted four times to say, "Don't do it," they must have had a good reason, I would think, and could they share it with us? And it's two months or more later?
And we asked, we asked for that.
And we have not, I mean, it should be fair, it should be in their minutes, or someone should be able to sit down and give us two paragraphs.
I agree.
Well, they haven't had a meeting in two months.
Well, but you don't really even need a minute. We have a chairman, the chairman and the staff should be able to give us that answer, and yet nobody seems to be able to do it. I've just, I guess that's why I'm skeptical that this is going to solve anything.
Staff has asked, for the record, we have asked.
So I think that's where it...
And, and was that, when they voted those four times, was there no staff present? Were there no minutes taken?
Mr. Johnson, I, Mr. Mayor Johnson, I really hate to get into the weeds on this, but I don't, I don't believe that they voted four times. I believe that the matter was discussed four times and that they eventually came to a vote. The issue with the, with the fire code came up. We've, we've made, we did try to make, we did communicate to the chair in terms of what the request was. We tried for, sorry to air this here, but we tried for, for several weeks to get a response. We did not get a response back. We subsequently have tried to schedule a meeting for July 18th. We had a quorum for that meeting, and then we had one and then two members that, one member said they couldn't make it, then the second member backed out, so we lost the quorum for the July 18th meeting. We're now looking to try to get, get them back together on August 1st.
I understand the problems, and I would rest my case. That's the problem with doing this with committees, but okay, if we, if we think this is going to advance the ball, I don't, I mean, there's important stuff to do.
I think there's more to do here, but I think it's a start, and I do, yeah, we have to, it's, this council has to hold its commission and awards accountable. You know, if they don't perform, then we have to look at what we do about it. I agree.
And so is that where you're going with it, Randy, to have a date where they need to either show up or excuse themselves from...
Well, again, it'll, it'll either prove, to me, it'll demonstrate, can we function? And if we can, great, and if we can't, let's just end this board. That's what it does for me.
Okay, so what if we were to just say, set, you meet once a month unless the meeting is canceled for a lack of agenda or something?
And the first Tuesday would work.
And get this stuff done, and then we'll know?
Yes.
Okay, I'm all right with that.
I agree.
Okay.
Work through the list then, at least once a month?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think that's clear.
You're the only one there, you know, hold it and have them show up. If they don't show up, then we, then we know we're...
Understood.
...beating a dead horse, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, is that taking...
11:15.
Yeah, well, it's something we promised we wouldn't do, and poor Brian sat here and those other folks, and now we've got Kimberly who's waiting. Why don't we just go ahead and write to, Kimberly's waiting, what, for the future agenda item?
I was, I was gonna, I was gonna suggest we add to the future agenda item a $25,000 grant for the consideration of general plan update support for the city's vital interests. I'd like to see that on the next agenda.
Okay, let's see, to be specific, okay, you're saying to discuss the...
Discuss the $25,000, request for $25,000 to contribute to the...
General plan.
To the, to the watching, watching out for the city's vital interests, I'm losing my mind, it's so late, with respect to the Ventura County general plan and specific O.I. area plan update. I'd like to see that on a future agenda.
Do you want it on the next agenda or future?
I'd like to see it on the next agenda because it's a timely issue.
If possible, okay. If, can I, just very, very quickly, is it the idea to maybe do something similar to what we had done with Stop the Trucks?
Yes.
Whereby we have an agreement where we will reimburse them for certain legal...
I, I, that would be open to discussion.
Okay.
But I think that's certainly open.
As opposed to a grant? I just wanted to...
Something along those lines. I'm sure that Kimberly will be happy to have her thoughts, and Mr. Shapiro offer their thoughts for...
Just wanted to get us in the right ballpark venue there, so...
But I think that's what we're talking about.
Okay.
And I think it's important and timely because the O.I. area plan is so vital to not lose that air quality aspect, you know?
Understood.
While, while I agree with that aspect, I just want to bring up the fact that that Stop the Truck thing went a long time, and I'm not particularly interested in spending a lot of money.
Well, this is...
I, I'd like to, you know, so...
I'd just say, put it on the agenda.
I'm open for the agenda, and I'm open for the discussion, and I'm open to see what Sea Frog has to say as to how they would spend that money.
Okay, so it sounds like what we need is, we'll, we'll call it for purposes this evening, a, a request from Sea Frog for the city council to consider possible funding or partial funding for an effort to track the general plan update in the Ojai Valley. Is that, is what you're asking for?
Yes, yes, sir.
So you, the staff doesn't have to do much, there are no recommendations, it's just sort of, you know, setting the table, and then we will...
Let them speak.
Have a conversation with representatives with Sea Frog.
And Sea Frog would probably then be able to give a full presentation.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking for.
Okay.
Okay.
It is a timely...
So don't come back with a prepared agreement or anything like that. Just, just have a discussion. Understood.
Okay.
I have other things, but it's late. It can wait.
Well, I've got, where are we going to? I wanted to share a couple of things real quick while we have the microphone on. Just from the, are we going to go to council member reports?
Yeah.
Real quick. I just wanted to talk about VCTC.
I'm going to skip my presentation, by the way.
I just have two quick things. VCTC, there's actually a $14 million being designated for environmental impact studies for widening of the 101 freeway from the 23 to the 33. I thought that was important that the community know. The second thing is, I wanted to give you guys all one of these as a gift from Haney Landscape to all of you council members.
Lawn area.
It's the, it's the lawn area. Pass them that way, Mayor.
Hey.
This is different angles.
Skateboards, you're going to like this.
Well, they'd be able to see the, see the stage.
Here's the front end. Here's some befores. That's what it looks like, that's what it, that's the vision and the dream. And then what I'll do, does anyone else need one? Because I've got plenty of them. And then I would like to do this, just for a quick one, Mayor.
Yeah, I had pictures too, but you preempted me.
So, for the citizens of Ojai?
Those that are still watching.
This is, oh, they are. If not, they'll YouTube me. This is just a bigger vision of what we have here. And this is actually the vision that the original conceptual drawing came up with Kathy Nolan and Greg Grant many, many years ago. It's a little smaller.
And cheaper.
We think we can do it, we think we could do it for a lot less than what was originally spec, but I just wondered if anyone would see that.
Councilman Haney, I would like...
Oh, and the last thing.
Go ahead.
And the last thing, that I'd like to, we've had this in the Libby Bowl Committee, and I think it's time to move it to the Recreation and Parks Committee and allow them to have some community input regarding this and the impacts that it might have on the bowl.
I concur.
And who is, who's going to pay for this?
Well, I...
You know, not, not presenting it, but I mean...
We do. We had in the C I P last year.
But we, we would have to budget for it.
Yep.
My thinking is that it's time for it to go to Park and Rec for review, that most of this kind of thing. They have a Libby Park Subcommittee, and I just think it'd be appropriate to, we have the dirt.
Yeah.
We have a dirt pile.
Do we?
That we had, that we scored, but I just think, I, I would just like to assign this to the Park and Rec Commission for review.
So...
This is just for information, right?
Yep.
Do we have consensus on that request?
What's that?
I have no problem with it.
Okay.
Turning this over to Recreation and Parks.
I love it.
No, we just request as, as much detail as we can give them in terms of...
I love the rendering.
Analysis, cost, I mean, you know, so they can do the analysis, cost and dimensions.
How much does this cost me?
Well, you could have given that too, sure.
Yeah, don't bring that up.
All right, well, we'll get it scheduled.
Okay, and I'd like to pass those on to you, Steve, to give to Recreation and Parks.
Yeah, let's, I'm going to give you mine back so it can go to Park and Rec.
Great.
Me too. You don't have to spend more money.
Is there any legal problem if I go home?
Pardon me?
Is there a legal problem if I go home?
The council needs only three members to meet.
I think I'm done.
Quorum would continue to exist.
I just have, I have one thing that I don't want to forget about, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
At the Gold Coast Transit District Board Meeting this month, we had a presentation from VCTC, and it was the triennial review of the, the fares of the buses, and the specific issue of our trolley came up in that report. And as you know, we're an urban area, so we're supposed to cover our fare box with 20%.
Right.
But VCTC had, in their presentation, had indicated that they might be able to have a blended rate for us, so that it might not be 10%, but they might be able to blend it 10 and 20 to come up with a 15%,
Wow.
Which would be very helpful to us.
Great.
And they felt, and they felt fairly confident they'd be able to do something like that blended rate for the Ojai trolley. So I'm going to stay with them on that. I'm not on VCTC.
Great, well, we should work together on that all?
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, it's you. Also, the, the declaring us urban in, in, no more in Santa Paula.
That, but that's, that is a foregone conclusion based on census and things like that. There's not much we can do about that.
I got a, I'm going to make one recall then.
I'm done.
I have one request for the staff to consider. This council had some agreements about some specific parts of budget policy, like updating on the handbook and compensatory time policy.
Yes.
Conversion to certain 40-hour positions.
Yes.
Why don't you, my suggestion is to codify some of that, put it in the consent calendar and see if anybody objects to it so we can move forward on some of those pieces.
Okay, probably won't be able to get it on for the, the next, well, yeah, okay, understand the request.
Okay.
We'll work on it.
I know, but okay.
I don't understand.
Well, I think it was, the idea was the, the comp time policy, which was the revisions to the employee handbook. I'm not sure how we could take the issue with the, with, I mean, anything that's going to affect the budget as a whole.
We would be approving it.
As kind of a carve-out?
As a, as a budget piece. Anyway, I'm just suggesting we try to move ahead while we're waiting for the full budget review. We try to move ahead on those pieces that would help with cost controls and, and council goals.
Yeah, I understand the comp time one, that would be easy to, to bring forward separate of the budget. Okay.
As a policy thing, not necessarily a money thing?
Well, we have to approve it, the change to the employee handbook, but I think we all agree that we needed to put some controls on comp time, and, you know, let's, let's do it now, you know?
In the same line, were we going to, were they going to bring back the COA?
No, that's part of the budget.
That's part of the budget.
Correct.
Anyway, I just didn't want to let that go another two months.
I understand.
Did you have anything more?
No, thank you.
You're done, okay.